And with One West Bank's big donation, the call goes out to other corporations to contribute as well.
Wells Fargo, DirecTV, Target, you know, these folks have all been big fans of our Fox Sports West. So we're always reaching out to as many people as possible. AT&amp;T does a lot of work in education. We'd love for them to be doing some work with the partnership.
I think the idea is to turn what was a $750,000 gift into a $7.5 million gift. And the mayor and me and others are committed to reach out to people and see that happen.
The partnership says every corporation and wealthy person conducting business in L.A. should contribute to local education. In Watts, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Turning to the city comptroller's latest audit, which reveals that a city program designed to help minority-owned businesses isn't doing its job. Rasha Goel reports.
Carmen Rad is a successful small business owner. She runs C.R. and A. Custom Incorporated, a large format printing company in downtown Los Angeles. A wall of accolades, 31 employees, and a long client list are the results of her hard work.
I love being in the city of L.A. The city of L.A. has been really good to me. And I've been in business for a long time.
While Rad says business is good, not all minority or women-owned businesses in the city of L.A. can say the same. An audit by L.A. City Comptroller Wendy Gruhl found that the city's minority and women enterprise contracting program, which was designed to help underrepresented groups compete for city contracts, needed improvement.
I have found that the city currently has a two-year backlog of certification requests for women and minority-owned businesses, causing small businesses to potentially lose out as much as $100 million in contracts that they are unable to compete for. Not enough has been done to support and proactively support and help minority and women-owned businesses compete for contracts and jobs.
Local business leaders say the city should ensure that everyone has the same access to quality job opportunities. The city offers bids on opportunities ranging from construction projects to food services to office supplies.
The city council needs to really look at this and put pressure on these departments and make sure that they're giving these opportunities that they're supposed to do.
We really do need these opportunities to grow our businesses.
Business owners such as Carmen Rad also say that while the city is doing their part, it is up to business owners to be proactive and persistent when it comes to their businesses. In the meantime, this audit will be sent for review to the mayor and city council. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Actress Betty White has finally arrived. We'll explain a big check for a charity that feeds the less fortunate and a bike rodeo that's 19 years old and going strong. These stories and more in City Beats. Actress and animal advocate Betty White stood still for the paparazzi. Or did she? Actually, that's an uncanny wax figure in her likeness recently unveiled at Madame Tussaud's Hollywood and who, other than Mr. L.A., Councilman Tom Labonge, was on hand to celebrate the occasion.
Betty White, the greatest ambassador of all, a great friend of the city of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Zoo, and now she's here every day and every night, 24 hours a day at Madame Tussaud's here in the heart of Hollywood. Betty, it's great to have you here. You look fabulous.
Betty White's wax figure joins that of Elizabeth Taylor's, Clint Eastwood's, and other Hollywood greats. St. Vincent's Meals on Wheels received a charitable check in the amount of $400,000 from the Los Angeles Food and Wine Festival. The second annual Los Angeles Food and Wine Festival will take place at the beginning of August and feature seminars, tastings, as well as over 100 of the nation's most esteemed chefs. St. Vincent's will also receive a portion of the festival's proceeds. The Palms Neighborhood Council hosted its 19th Annual Palms Bike Rodeo on a recent Saturday at Palms Elementary School. LAPD officers were on hand to teach kids about bike safety. The family-friendly event also featured a bike auction as well as arts and crafts activities.
We put this event together every year to encourage bike safety, to encourage people to actually ride their bikes for all the benefits that come from that. And also, our neighborhood is very congested, so we try to encourage people to bike more.
It's just perfect for the kids because they have a lot of opportunity to interact with the community.
The Palms area and Councilman Paul Coretza's district has had a long history with biking. The first-in-the-nation BMX event was held at Palms Recreation on Overland Avenue in the 1960s. If you live in the West Valley and need help opening a new business, help is here in the form of the newly opened Resita Branch of the Los Angeles Business Source Center. A program of the mayor's office, the Business Source Center provides startup ventures and small business owners cost-effective tools to help their business grow and remain competitive. The nonprofit Valley Economic Development Center, or VEDC, which has a long history assisting job seekers and small businesses, received a grant from the city to operate this new office. And as we told you earlier, we've taken L.A. this week on the road to Councilman Jose Wezar's Broadway historic corridor. And over my right shoulder is one of the restaurants we told you about earlier, Ummami Katesan, which opened up not too long ago as part of the renaissance that's taking place here. But another corner of Councilman Wezar's district is also getting some much-needed sprucing up. Thanks to new state funding, Highland Park will get new park space for kids and families to play. Anna Marcos reports.
It was a festive crowd that celebrated in Highland Park. The reason, one more piece of neglected inner-city turf at this corner of York Boulevard and Avenue 50 will soon become a Green Pocket Park.
This shows that persistence pays off, that we should never give up in trying to improve our community. And it is because of the community's loud voice that we have received funding.
Community members worked with Councilmember Jose Wezar's office to get close to $3 million in funding from Proposition 84, a state measure that allocates money for more parks and open space in hard-hit urban areas like Highland Park. State Senator Kevin DeLeón authored the measure.
During the course of my campaign, when I walked in Highland Park, when I walked in Lincoln Heights and El Sereno and City Terrace and other places, Echo Park, there was a dearth of green parks and open space. Parks belong to everybody regardless of the color of your skin, regardless of where you come from.
The York Boulevard and Avenue 50 Pocket Park is just part of the York Vision Plan, a project by Councilmember Jose Wezar's office to improve the area with more bike lanes and pedestrian-friendly features.
I think it's great for the community. I have a business here. I have a home here and a family, and I'm very excited about it.
I have a business here. I live here, so I want it to be nice.
The greening of L.A. takes another step as another piece of neglected turf grows some grass. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The Highland Park Pocket Park is just one of two city of L.A. projects to receive money from Prop 84 in this round of funding. Well, if you're just joining us, we have taken L.A. this week on the road this week, as you can see, here to the historic Broadway Corridor downtown to highlight some of the many exciting things happening here. So if you haven't come down to Broadway recently, come and check out the restaurants or take a tour of the architecture. It is beautiful down here. And here again are some other things to do in other parts of our city. If you've ever found yourself singing songs from "The Little Mermaid" in your shower, this is the event for you. Join in with hundreds of your fellow Angelinos to belt out popular and classic tunes at the Friday Night Sing-alongs hosted by the Walt Disney Concert Hall. The next sing-along on Friday, June 22, is of Disney favorites. The free event takes place from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., but you do have to line up for tickets, which are distributed starting at 6:00 p.m. on a first-come, first-served basis. No experience necessary, and song sheets are provided. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. More info can be found at musiccenter.org. Join New Horizons for their annual Walk on the Horizon 5K Walk to help make a difference in the lives of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The walk takes place Saturday, June 23 at Woodley Park, located at 6350 Woodley Avenue in Van Nuys. The event will feature a 5K run at 8:30 a.m. and a non-competitive walk around the park at 9:00 a.m., followed by an awards celebration with food and live music. For more information on Walk on the Horizon or to register, visit newhorizons-sfv.org/walk. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation will be hosting its Discover Recycling Open House on Saturday, June 23 at the Harbor District Yard, located at 1400 North Gaffey Street in San Pedro. The event will be held from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. The event invites residents of all ages to meet sanitation collection truck drivers and staff. Enjoy truck demonstrations and facility tours. You can also drop off your old unwanted tires at this event. Go to bureauofsanitationopenhouses.blogspot.com for more info. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Earlier, we showed you some of the new businesses that have taken up residence here on Broadway, including Ummami Katesan behind me, as well as what will be the new Torino Tarantino Design Headquarters and the Ace Hotel, both on the 900 block of Broadway. To the old Clifton's Cafeteria on the 600 block, which is currently undergoing a makeover. But now, we introduce you to yet another store to take up residence here on Broadway, a convenience store to be exact, but one that's redefining food on the go. From Japan to downtown L.A., Famima is a chain of upscale convenience stores that's part of the Japanese-owned Family Mart stores. This newly opened branch here at the historic Spring Arcade Building is just the latest in a string of businesses trying to get in on the ground floor, so to speak, in what many believe is the start of something big here on Broadway.
It has about 12 historic theaters, beautiful shopping areas, also beautiful architecture. And this is a place where people came to get entertained and do their shopping. But throughout the years, it's had its challenges. At nighttime, this place, I must say, was a ghost town because the last year or so is coming back to life. And through our efforts to improve the streetscape and landscape and make passed laws that make it easier for building owners to convert their properties, we're getting the results we would like to see.
Jumping at the chance to be a part of the area's unquestionable revitalization, Famima plans to operate the 1,800-square-foot space at the arcade building 24 hours, seven days a week. And Famima is not your typical convenience store selling only food in air-vacuumed bags. There are salads, sushi rolls, and fresh fruit to choose from, proving that food on the go doesn't have to be bad for you. But of course, there are still your convenience store staples like coffee, tea, and sweet treats.
It's always good to have options, you know? And you know what? I don't think you see that in the past where you have fruits and vegetables. Before, it was just potato chips and soda. Now you get different options to have healthy lifestyles.
Famima is hoping to cash in on the appetite for change here on Broadway.
We really saw what was happening on Broadway, and I targeted this area. We targeted this area. And I said, I want a store somewhere between Fifth and Seventh Streets on Broadway. When that gets going, we're ready to start working our way along Broadway and the rest of this downtown area. But we loved the Broadway and what was happening out here.
And what's going on is just the start of many more things to come.
We also have Figaro Bistro coming in, a popular restaurant in Silver Lake that has decided to call Broadway its home. And Ross DressforLess, the first major retailer, is coming back to the old Woolworths Building.
Winds of change on Broadway, bringing together the old and the new in the hopes of making history once again. The arcade building is located in the 500 block of Broadway. And as you can see over my right shoulder, Two Boots Pizza from New York also recently opened up a branch here in the 800 block of Broadway, right next to the Orpheum Theater. Well, that's going to do it for this special On Location episode of L.A. this week, where we highlight some of the exciting things going on here. We hope you enjoyed this tour as much as we did. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow or like us on Facebook. We'll see you back in the studio next week for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 19. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon Buscañon, Cardenas, Engler, Garcetti, Wezar, Caressa, Corian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, Timmer, is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labonge moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wezar moves. Mr. Engler seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone in council chambers to please rise. Mr. Garcetti, would you lead us in our flag salute?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could please rise and place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, I think somebody is stealing my pencils. So if I could have the sergeants keep an eye on my pencil drawer, so maybe we can catch whoever is stealing the president's pencils. Okay, with that said, we should go through the agenda at this point in time. So, Madam Clerk, if you would go through the first section. I believe that's Items 1 and 2.
Yes, Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing.
Any cards?
Cards on Item 1.
Members, anyone want to call? Mr. Reyes, you want to call? Item 2 special?
Actually, it's 1B.
Oh, okay, so...
1B, just to continue that one for July 19.
Okay, Madam Clerk, item...
Or anytime after that.
Item 1B will be continued to at least...
Council's on recess at July 19, so it'd be July 24 would be the next...
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, members, Item 2? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, the next section, Items 3 through 10.
Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, specials? Items 3 through 10. Mr. Garcetti, would you like to hold Item 4? Item 4? Mr. Reyes?
Item 6.
Okay, on the remaining items, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. And could we put Mr. Corian? Mr. Corian is here, and I want to make sure that he's... Okay, so now, before we... Let's discontinue that vote. Item 10 for Mr. Alacon. Okay, now, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that...
And, Susan, Mr. President, the ordinance on Item Number 3 will be held over for one week unless reconsidered.
Okay, when we get 12, remind me, and we will reconsider that item. At this point, let's move to Items 11 through 19.
Items 11 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us. Okay, cards?
Cards on Items 11, 12, 13, and 18.
11 through 19, members, specials. Specials, okay. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Englander, Mr. Englander, I see that you're in your chair eating something. Did you bring enough for everyone?
I did. I have my bagel cut up into 15 slices.
No, I think we have more than 15 people that are here.
We'll have to ration it, Mr. President.
Okay. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
On the supplemental agenda, Item 20 is an item for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, since we're gonna have a special presentation where it relates to Item 20, why don't we hold that momentarily, okay?
Okay.
And that brings us to presentations?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas, how would you like to proceed with Item 20 slash the presentation?
Yes, we're taking both items together.
So at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to my good friend, Councilman Tony Cardenas.
And, Mr. President? Mr. President, when we're done with the presentation, if you could take the speaker cards in order after that?
Yes, with whatever your desire is, we will do that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members. Today, we have the opportunity to vote on a resolution to create Elephant Awareness Day. And I'll quote someone who's very famous and very wise. As Gandhi said once, "You can judge the moral progress of a society by the way it treats its animals." In an effort to continue making the city of Los Angeles a national leader in animal welfare, today the Los Angeles City Council will have the opportunity to vote on a resolution declaring August 3rd as Elephant Awareness Day. Throughout history, elephants have played an important role in human economies, religion, and culture, and they are beloved animals that attract crowds to zoos and circuses and many attractions. Many people are unaware, though, of the inhumane abuses that these creatures suffer when they are held in captivity. These large and general mammals are squeezed into generously small spaces, dangerously small spaces, causing them mental and physical harm, and most are also tortured to ensure that they perform. To many of these animals, they die well before their average life expectancy under these conditions. In an effort to increase the public's awareness of the inhumane conditions many elephants face, I'm asking to recognize August 3rd as Elephant Awareness Day. Today's historic vote comes before the Animal Rights National Conference, the world's largest and the longest-running animal rights gathering hailing back to 1981, with conference attendees coming from 40 U.S. states and 13 countries around the world. Today, we will not only be declaring Elephant Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles, but also honoring the work of Ms. Juliette West, an amazing young woman who has helped create awareness around elephant abuse and has become an inspirational speaker for youth organizations, schools, and animal rights groups across the country. Through her work, Juliette West founded Juliet Speaks, a youth advocacy brand that has touched hundreds of thousands of young people by teaching them about animal abuse and elephants in captivity. So today, colleagues, we acknowledge both Juliette West for her tireless dedication to animal rights and also have the opportunity to vote on declaring August 3rd as Elephant Awareness Day. At this time, I'd like to bring to the podium Juliette West, this amazing young lady who continues to work hard on behalf of elephants locally and worldwide, and she is also the founder of Juliette Speaks.
Thank you. I'd like to express my appreciation to the City Councilman Tony Cardenas and the city of Los Angeles for passing this resolution to create Elephant Awareness Day on August 3rd. Councilman Cardenas has been a great voice for elephants in Los Angeles, and he has made all of this possible. I am so honored to receive this personal recognition for my work. Elephant Awareness Day will provide a powerful foundation for public awareness campaigns, and hopefully will result in more humane treatment of elephants in Los Angeles and beyond. I became an activist at the age of nine when I began raising money for a local animal rescue center my family adopted our cat from. Later, at the age of 13, I was involved in the effort to get an elephant out of the L.A. Zoo. That campaign inspired me to learn more about the treatment of elephants living in captivity. I saw the miserable lives of elephants in captivity, intelligent and social creatures, being forced to endure years of beating and confinement just so we can enjoy a few moments of entertainment. Over the past few years, I have worked to educate young people about what goes on behind the scenes at zoos, circuses, and tourist attractions involving elephants, so that they can choose not to support entertainment that involves cruel treatment of elephants. I was astonished at how well-kept a secret the cruelty really was. So many people were unknowingly supporting industries that train their elephants in abusive ways. I knew it wasn't fair to the elephants for this to be kept a secret for much longer, so I knew I had to be their voice. Elephant Awareness Day will serve as a voice for the elephants who cannot speak for themselves, to bring light to a situation that needs to be changed. My efforts for awareness and education have mostly been aimed at the youth. I believe that children have an easily sparked passion for animals and have the enthusiasm to make a difference. They are the ones being targeted to attend circuses and shows using elephants, so I want them to understand that an elephant does not belong on the stage and why. While I am doing all that I can, so much more needs to be done. Elephant Awareness Day will provide an excellent point for engaging youth and will be able to bring... and will bring awareness to many thousands of people each year. I will reach out to schools in the area and invite everyone to become involved. Thank you for putting the support of the city of Los Angeles behind this issue. I hope you feel proud to be part of the solution for providing just and humane treatment for the elephants in our care. Thank you.
No, thank you. At age... At age nine, all I was concerned about was watching The Three Stooges or something, and here you are becoming an activist at an early age, so I commend you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I would like to ask Rochelle Owen, who's the manager of youth campaigns for PETA, to come and say a few words.
Well, Mr. Cardenas, so you're just gonna go through the cards, so we're fine.
Yeah, some of the cards, yeah.
No, there's... I'm gonna leave it up to you. So go, welcome Ms. Owens.
Hello. Yes, my name is Rochelle Owen, and I'm the manager of youth campaigns for PETA, and I specifically work in PETA2, which is the world's largest youth animal rights group in the world. In my job at PETA, I work with young people around the country who are making it known that they care about how animals are treated in our society. So you can imagine how thrilled I was to meet and work with Juliette West on her campaign to help those who need it the most. Working with Juliette to speak up for elephants, who, as she said, are intelligent, sensitive, majestic, and tragically awfully treated in industries that exploit them, has been an honor. In addition, PETA's headquarters is now in their new home of Los Angeles, and we could not be more excited that L.A. is taking this progressive step to honor both Juliette and elephants. Although people typically love elephants, the average person knows little to nothing about what happens to them behind the scenes in industries like circuses. Elephants are routinely taken from their families, chained, beaten, and forced to live a life traveling from city to city for 50 weeks out of the year. They are denied everything that would be natural and enjoyable to them, like running, playing, or building social bonds with other elephants, even their own family. These facts are sad, but there is hope because there are so many ways that each of us can help. And Juliette's passion, dedication, and creativity in the name of saving animals is proof that we all can do something to help elephants. In taking this step to honor Juliette and, you know, passionate animal rights advocates and creating Elephant Awareness Day, Los Angeles is lending the voice of its millions of compassionate citizens to the plight of elephants in California and around the world. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Next, I'd like to ask Matt Russell from Camp... He's the Campaign Director of Animal Defenders International. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas, you're on a roll. You've got another one of the cards. Hey, Matt, how are you?
I'm doing very well.
How old were you when you got started? Can you beat nine?
I have to say I was a little older than Juliette. President Weston and members of the council, "Only from understanding another species can we hope to foster the love and empathy required to respect and protect them. Elephant Awareness Day will create a new opportunity to educate our community about a uniquely majestic species imperiled in the wild and suffering in captivity. We applaud the leadership of Councilman Tony Cardenas and Paul Coretts and all the members of the Los Angeles City Council for their ongoing dedication to animal protection and for proposing this day for elephant awareness. Los Angeles is fortunate to have forward-thinking leaders who spotlight young activists like Juliette West, to recognize her accomplishments, which is an impressively long list already at her young age, and encourage her to keep going, sharing, speaking out, and changing the hearts, minds, and actions of others. Her soft-spoken style and leadership through example is one we can all learn from and be inspired by. Growing advocacy efforts and educational campaigns are helping curb threats faced by wild populations of elephants from poaching and loss of habitat, and is working to alleviate suffering of captive elephants used for entertainment. Animal Defenders International has seen a lot in the 20 years we've been working around the world to expose the abuses of these animals, and we've created many lasting protections for animals through cooperations with governments, large and small. Some notable victories have already occurred just this month. The country of Paraguay announced a prohibition on wild animals from performing and traveling circuses. A similar ban just passed in Bogota, Colombia, as well as here in the U.S. Dane County in Wisconsin enacted a restriction on the use of elephants for entertainment. Similar legislation to protect circus animals has been passed in eight California cities and more than 30 jurisdictions across the country, and similar restrictions already exist in more than 20 countries around the world. And these laws are being discussed in the United States, United Kingdom, Netherlands, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, and Norway. And in fact, just in this 112th Congress, Animal Defenders International, along with Congressman Jim Moran and Congressman Bill Young, have introduced federal legislation, the Traveling Exotic Animal Protection Act, which aims to protect wild animals in traveling circuses. Animal Defenders International thanks the Los Angeles City Council for all the past work enacting progressive policies to protect animals and for taking the time out of their busy schedule to acknowledge the efforts of one incredible young activist, Juliette West, and to dedicate a day to elephants. ADI looks forward to working with Juliette and the council to create more humane policy which is in harmony with the hearts of Angelenos. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Let me guess, Mr. Cardenas, Catherine Doyle?
Yes, from Elephant Campaign Director of Defense of Animals.
I'm reading your mind. Come forward, Ms. Doyle.
Very good. I'll make this short and sweet. First of all, my name is Catherine Doyle. I'm the Elephant Campaign Director within Defense of Animals, and of course, I'm a longtime resident of Los Angeles. And I want to say I'm so honored to have... to be able to work with Juliette, who is just an amazing young woman, who is such an inspiration to coming generations of activists and concerned citizens right here in L.A. and around the world, I suspect. And again, I'm very honored to be here on this special day for her. In Defense of Animals has long been working to inform the public about the plight of elephants in captivity and in the wild, so we're especially pleased that the Los Angeles City Council is considering this progressive resolution to establish Elephant Awareness Day. Awareness is the key to protecting and preserving these magnificent animals, whether it's learning about the plight of elephants in captivity or taking action to conserve them in the wild. As we've seen over the years, and as the council well knows, the care and treatment of elephants has been an enormously important issue for the people of Los Angeles, whether it concerns the elephants confined at the zoo or those in traveling circuses. Last year, 500 people protested the use and abuse of elephants at the Ringling Brothers Circus performances here downtown. Yet many people still remain unaware of the suffering of elephants in captivity and of the very serious threats to them in the wild. Passage of this resolution will go a long way toward creating much-needed awareness and bring the city another step closer to becoming the most aware and most humane city in the country. In Defense of Animals applauds Councilmember Cardenas, a true champion for elephants and for the people of Los Angeles, for introducing this resolution, and we urge the city council to pass this resolution and make Los Angeles the first city that I'm aware of to have an Elephant Awareness Day. Thank you so much.
No, thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas, we have a couple of members on the queue, so if we could let them speak first. Mr. Englander?
I felt compelled as the only Republican in the room, I think, the only elephant in the room, to read...
Now you know what Billy feels like.
To read an elephant poem for the day. So, "Elephants are lovely guys who are good and true and tell no lies. They don't take more than they can eat and always watch where they put their feet. They don't play with electric wires and they never... You've never heard them starting fires." It actually goes on and on. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I wanted to thank you. Eric's disappointed that I didn't read the entire elephant. I'll post it. I will post it on my Facebook later this afternoon and share it with the world so you can see it. But I wanted to thank you all for coming, and it really... It's incredible because I went to this last weekend at the Beastly Ball. And when... Every time we see elephants, and I know many people have different opinions, whether they should be in captivity or not, but regardless, they're an incredible, incredible animal. It's one of the most amazing and beautiful animals on earth, the largest mammal, and the tusks. And I remember as a small child first seeing an elephant and how just in awe I was. And they are an endangered species. I also am a Republican, but I'm also on the Endangered Species Committee of the Sierra Club, and have been very involved in protecting wild animals as well. And I know Mr. Cardenas and I talked about it many years ago, about the idea of actually opening the Chatsworth Nature Preserve to elephants. I don't know that we would ever do that because it's the only city's nature preserve, but it would be great to see them roaming around in our communities. So again, thank you for doing this today.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Coretts?
Well, I don't think I can top that. I'm not sure I should even speak after that.
Go ahead and read Green Eggs and Ham or something. Dr. Seuss.
But I did first want to commend Juliette. I don't know you, but I think you set a great example for the young people in the city, and hopefully you'll continue to be active, and maybe we'll see you here in 10 or 20 years. I want to thank Mr. Cardenas for bringing this forward. There's no doubt that animals in the United States and elsewhere, elephants in particular, don't do well in captivity. They're not treated as they should be, and we have a long way to go in that regard. And they are diminishing rapidly in the wild. Not enough is being done on either of these fronts, so I appreciate you bringing this resolution as a first step in the right direction in terms of our... resolution as a first step in the right direction in terms of our treatment of animals as a society.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Rosendahl?
Good morning and thanks for coming. I have a photo of Billy the Elephant on my wall. I've wandered all over the world and have seen elephants in many different countries. And what we all need to remember, an elephant is very sensitive, and it remembers. They have a great history within themselves, and if you look how they operate as a group, they're phenomenal. They're very gentle animals. They're very strong animals, and so bless you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Juliet to step forward. I'd like to give her a gift. Many years ago, when I met her and she was just a little girl, she gave me a gift that I have in my office, which is elephants, a sculpture. But I'd just like to thank her that that gift pales in comparison of the gift that she's given to many people, young and old, by teaching them compassion, by teaching them knowledge, and getting us to understand how important elephants are, not only to themselves, but to society and to the entire world. So here's a gift to you, Juliet. On behalf of the entire city, elected officials of the City of Los Angeles, this is a resolution that you well deserve and earned, and I'm sure this is not the last one.
Let's give her a round of applause.
And this goes to our friends who spoke today. They'll receive this on behalf of the entire community on our Elephant Awareness Day. Once again, this hopefully will be a tradition, Mr. Coretts, as we go forward, as I won't be able to be making presentations here shortly if everything goes well, but hopefully we'll keep this as a tradition, and I'm sure you'll do a much, much better job every year that comes by. So to all of the entire community who cares about elephants, this is a resolution, a gift to the community on behalf of Elephant Awareness Day. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Mr. Cardenas, let's make this official. Madam Clerk, item 20 is before us. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
It's official, Elephant Awareness Day. You guys can follow Mr. Cardenas into the media room. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready? At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Paul Krikorian forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask all of my friends from the Foothills community to come on up and join me at the podium, if you would. Jerry, I'm going to force you. You've got to do it. Members, as you all very well know, we've all gone through a difficult process of redistricting, and one of the hard parts about that process is losing parts of our district that we have cared about and cared for and worked closely with for as long as we've served on the council. And for me, one of those areas is the Foothill Communities of Sunland Dahanga, Shadow Hills, Lakeview Terrace, La Tuna Canyon, and surrounding areas. And it's been an unbelievable privilege to represent this very, very special and unique part of our city, which is special and unique not only because of its geography, its physical beauty, but most importantly, because of the people who live there, the people who are so passionate about that community and are so committed to volunteerism and to making our city, that community, and our entire city such an extraordinary place. In 1908, Sunland was referred to by the LA Times as "difficult to access" at a height of 1,500 feet over rough mountain roads, and it was mentioned that an automobile trip from Los Angeles took a long day to complete. And I think for many people in the Foothills, it seems sometimes like the city still feels that way. But we've worked hard over the last two and a half years to link this part of our city more closely to City Hall, to work in partnership with many of the people that you see here to make sure that the people of the Foothills Communities are getting the kind of city services that they need and the kind of representation that they need. And we've succeeded, I think, in great measure because of the people that you see here with me today. In 1910, the Times wrote, about Sunland, "The place is aptly named. One gets no inkling of the beauties till he is right in the town. Great live oaks scattered with nature's reckless disregard for expense give the place a stately quiet. In the center of town, the oaks are so thick that the sun is baffled, and this section has been made a public park, which is the Fourth of July and general hot-weather rendezvous of the country round from Glendale to San Fernando." And I think, you know, although 100 years have passed since that was written, that still remains very much true. So I'm very, very pleased to be able to recognize a few of the organizations that have made this part of town so important to our city, and most importantly, the people who have made the quality of life in that community so much better for the people who actually live and work and play there. And so I want to first recognize our Neighborhood Council representatives from the Sunland Dahanga Neighborhood Council, as well as the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council. As you know, I chaired education in neighborhoods. I've worked with just about every Neighborhood Council in the city in one way or the other. And you will not find more active, more professional, more engaged, more involved neighborhood councils than the Sunland Dahanga Neighborhood Council and Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council. So I'd like to ask Tommy Lynn Bowling to receive this on behalf of STNC, and Seal Borman to receive this on behalf of Foothill Trails.
Councilmember Krikorian, you do have one speaker on the queue?
Oh, I've got a ways to go.
Okay, all right. Didn't mean to cut you off.
I've been in the Neighborhood Council system since its inception, and I have to say, and I said it to Mr. Krikorian, the Neighborhood Council is only as effective as its councilmen is receptive. And we've had the honor of having very receptive councilmen, especially with Councilman Krikorian, and it's been an honor working with Councilman Krikorian, and we look forward to working with our new councilman, Alarcon, even though it will be brief. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to say thank you very much to Paul for having us here today and bringing us out from the hill country to be with you, and thank him very much for serving with us for the last couple of years. And we do look forward to working with Richard, who I've had an opportunity to work with on many occasions, living in Lakeview Terrace. So everything is moving forward as beautifully as could be expected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seal. Thank you, Tommy Lynn. As with any community, this is a community that has many different moving parts that sometimes are a challenge to mesh together, but this community, I think, has done that remarkably well. And the Sunland Dahanga Chamber of Commerce has been a key element in bringing people together around common purpose. And I'd like to ask Richard Stewart to come up to receive this certificate on behalf of the Sunland Dahanga Chamber of Commerce. And Richard, too, speaking of common purpose, was one of the key people, the key visionaries who allowed us to launch our Hometown Heroes program, which is a street banner program along Foothill Boulevard that recognizes the sacrifice of the people, the families of the Foothills Community who are serving in the military. And I want to thank Richard for all of his great work, his artistry, his vision for our community. Richard?
Thank you, Paul. If I could just officially thank you. Yes, I wanted to thank Paul, and also, just from the bottom of our heart, we have a lot of rocks in Sunland Dahanga, and so we wanted to present officially, we gave this to him downstairs, a trophy of rocks that he has earned. And I'll just say, it says, "Paul Krikorian, thank you for caring for the rocks of Sunland Dahanga." And it's been our pleasure. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Richard, very much. I think I recognize some of those rocks. I think some of them were thrown at me at one time or another. Next, I want to recognize the Sunland Dahanga Shadow Hills Rotary, which, among many other things, puts on the Fourth of July Parade and the Christmas tree lighting at Bolton Hall. So I'd like to ask Susan Stewart to come up and receive this recognition on behalf of the Sunland Dahanga Shadow Hills Rotary Club.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We've really appreciated many, many things that Councilman Krikorian has done in our community, including the Hometown Heroes banners, which he mentioned was a very, very key aspect to that, and his staff have helped us with that throughout. And also, just stepping up even on a short, very fast, short term, to come help light the Christmas tree for our winter fest, or whatever it is that we need, Councilman Krikorian has been there for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Susan. Thank you. One of our city's great artistic treasures is in the Sunland Dahanga Community, and if you haven't been there, I would urge you to visit it. The Magroity Arts Center is in the historic home of Senator Magroity, State Senator Magroity, who was California's first poet laureate. And his home is one of the most beautiful locations you can imagine, but it had fallen into great disrepair until recently, when this council supported my efforts to invest in the deferred maintenance that had been put off for too long, so we were able to protect this historic treasure. And I want to recognize Claire Knowlton and the Magroity Arts Center for the incredible work that they're doing for the people of this community in providing an arts center, a vibrant arts center, with classes that are going on all the time, with a destination point where our poet laureate event happens, and so many other events that are important to this community. So Claire, thank you very much for all that you've done at the Magroity Arts Center.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much, Paul. And, you know, Magroity Arts Center is a partnered center. It's owned by the City of Los Angeles, so this is your treasure, and it's with Paul's support and with all of your support that Magroity Arts Center is able to serve the community and all of Los Angeles and really thrive. So you have been our champion, and we appreciate it so much, and we look forward to working with you, Richard, in the year to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And then finally, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this is a community with a long history, and maybe the most important spiritual hub of the community, I guess, if you will, is Bolton Hall, which is the second historical landmark in the entire city of Los Angeles. And within that Bolton Hall is a wonderful museum of the entire history of the community, and it's maintained by the Little Andrews Historical Society. And as we continue to create the history of the region, I want to recognize Sherri Smith, the president of Little Andrews Historical Society, and Lloyd Hitt, who I suppose is sort of the president emeritus in a lot of ways of the Little Andrews Historical Society.
I just would like to thank Paul for attending so many of our special events and being so attentive and caring for Bolton Hall and the history of the Sunland Dahanga area. And he will be missed, and we are looking forward, however, to working with Richard in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Alarcon, I mean, as we pass the baton, if you can come on up and -- or speak from there. If I may, Mr. President, jump the line. I think it's only appropriate that the future council member of this community be afforded an opportunity to say a few words as well.
Well, he's already on the queue. He jumped the line himself. He's excited, and at this point in time, I'd like to call on our dear friend and colleague, Richard Alarcon.
Yeah, Councilmember Krikorian graciously asked me to join him with the group, but this is his day, and I wanted it to be cleared to the masses. But I'll be joining you for the pictures, because I think that's a great picture. You know, having served on this council a long time, I remember when Joel Wax took over the Sunland Dahanga area and Shadow Hills, and he was coming from Hollywood and North Hollywood to represent this unique part of Los Angeles. And a lot of people were questioning, well, how's he going to do it? Well, he did it, and he did a tremendous job of representing. And truly, it demonstrated to me that a good council member is one who could serve really any part of Los Angeles just as effectively, because they need to first understand what the community is all about. And so as I've transitioned, as I am in transition to represent this same area, wherever I go, Paul's footprints and fingerprints are all over the place. And more than that, there is a welcome mat for Paul Krikorian, because this community has truly embraced him, and they have worked so effectively together. And so I, you know, I always thought it was Joel's boots that did it, but Paul did it without wearing the cowboy boots, and I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. But more than anything else, what it taught me is that it's not the council member, it's the community. This is a very folksy community that appreciates people who take an interest in preserving the attributes of Sunland Dahanga and Shadow Hills. And Lakeview Terrace, excuse me, the other half of Lakeview Terrace that I don't currently represent but will, they truly embrace the leadership as long as the leadership responds. And so, Paul, you have responded to their requests. You have responded to their projects. You have participated in their events and supported them, and that's why they love you and truly respect you. Now, I figure if Joel Wax can represent Sunland Dahanga, and Paul Krikorian can represent Sunland Dahanga, coming from North Hollywood and Burbank and those locations, then Richard Alarcon, who swam in the plunge that used to exist long ago, whose father had dozens and dozens of friends and customers, including Howard Finn. In fact, I got to tell you this story. When Ann Finn interviewed me when I was running for city council, we sat down in her living room, and I looked at her and I said, "Excuse me, but is this the furniture my dad upholstered for you like 20 years ago?" And she said, "It sure is." And so we have roots in Sunland Dahanga. So I figure, I hope that I can serve as well in Sunland Dahanga as Joel Wax and Paul Krikorian have, and of course Wendy Grue, who represented there from the beginning. And so with that, Paul, I want to congratulate you, salute you, and more, most importantly, I want to thank you for all the assistance that you have provided in the transition and helping us. Your staff has been so open, your chief of staff, Jackie Keen, who I hired many, many years ago in the mayor's office. All of your staff have been so helpful in giving us a better understanding of the challenge that is ahead. And so for that, I thank you, and I'm sure the community thanks you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. Thanks for those kind words, and I know you will do a great job representing this community so long as you do one thing, that's trust in all these people behind me and lean on them and make them your partners, and you can't miss. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have more than 12 members present today, so if we, I'm going to call for a vote of reconsideration on item number three. Members, we're going to vote on reconsideration. If we could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the item. We are now voting on item three. If we could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that's been approved.
Mr. President, there's a request for that item to go forthwith.
Forthwith. It's also my understanding that Councilmember Alarcon wishes to continue item 1A. I do not remember to what date.
For 30 days, and that would be till July 24th.
Okay, without objection. Okay, I'm going to, before we go into, I'm going to jump around a little bit today, but I'm going to take up, we have so many people here-- but I'm gonna take up, we have so many people here for item four. We will take that item up next, but I do wanna do three of our public comment cards. So if I could call up George Kukorzarian, John Brown, Alexi Keats, please come forward. I called three names. I expect to see three people. Please come forward. Whoever makes it to the podium first will speak first. Don't wait. Your name, sir, is? Go right ahead, Mr. Brown.
First, I'd like to say hello to all of you. I've been living in this city since I was a sailor. I'm a veteran. I want to tell you, if you ever get sick, don't take pain pills, morphine, Oxycontin, patches on your skin with fentanyl in them. It's all crap, man. If you want something that makes you really feel good and get rid of your pain, you smoke marijuana. Now, I'll tell you something. I lived in San Francisco, and in San Francisco, during the time that I was getting sick, there were people dying every day in the hospital. And Brownie Mary took a marijuana brownie to get them out of the hospital, and she did. She finally died of cancer, or something. But they finally got the vote passed, and everything turned out all right. You know, I want a marijuana dispensary everywhere in this town where everyone that's sick can walk to it. I mean, my God. What is the big deal about a marijuana dispensary? I got five liquor stores on my corner. Now, I live in a hospital. I'm an old veteran that lives in Longwood Manor Hospital. And I've been going to the dispensary for a long time. I pay nothing for marijuana. But I want to tell you something. I want to see L.A. with walking streets, Hollywood Boulevard, Pico Main. I want to see the city opened up, and I want to be the next mayor. John Brown. I want to be your boss, John Brown. Just write my name in or figure it out, because I'm announcing my candidacy on this platform as the next mayor of this city. Now, I want to hear some applause.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And just for the record, the mayor is not our boss. He's a colleague. Yes, sir, you are?
Good morning. My name is Alexi Keats. And thank you very much for having me here today, councilmembers. And I'd also like to congratulate you on deciding on National Elephant Day on August 3rd. I think that's a wonderful decision. In college, I studied eastern philosophy, so elephants actually have a very special place in my heart. In India, the elephant-headed god Ganesh is actually considered the remover of obstacles. And for me and for many others, chronic pain is the greatest obstacle you can face. And for some, just like John Brown before me said, you can't just go to any dispensary that you want to and have whatever you want, because sometimes proximity is the biggest issue. Sometimes getting up in the morning is the hardest thing you can do, and making your way to the closest dispensary for the best thing you can find is the only option. If you vote for this ban, and both bans, that could potentially limit or completely eliminate the number of dispensaries in the city, you will be causing unbelievable amounts of pain to people who have trouble just waking up. Understand that putting, destroying a mosquito with a cannonball like this is just going to create more obstacles for more and more people who demand safe and legal access to something that's not harmful and that does not promote crime or ill behavior in any of the communities in which it exists. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If I could call George Abrams and Fran Reichenbach to come forward. I believe you guys have filled out a general public comment card.
Yes, that's true.
But are you, if you're here to speak on the Save Hollywood, you have to fill out a card on that specifically.
Yeah, I filled one out for that later.
Okay, so.
I'll just go on my public comments.
Okay, as long as it doesn't deal with that item.
Okay. The city is facing a $1 billion deficit over the next four years and has had numerous bond rating downgrades in the last year. And right now, it'd be a good time for the city not to get involved in another money-losing legal battle. If there are any upcoming council actions which would require the council to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B1 to allow the council to confer with its legal counsel, you might want to pursue the lower-cost option of correcting the proposed action before voting to approve it.
Thank you. Fran, you identify yourself?
My name's Fran Reichenbach. And I just kinda wanted to dovetail on that, what George was talking about. Just in case something might accidentally come up today, just in case, that could accidentally get you guys into closed session, and you could accidentally be talking to your attorneys about spending my tax dollars on accidentally defending yourselves against some possible litigation, I'd ask you to consider that there's a lot more taxpayers than me that are watching you today. Please, don't do it.
Thank you. Did, was that George Abrams? Did he come forward? Because I still haven't heard, or was that George? Okay. Okay, so now we're gonna move from public, general public comment, and we'll go to item number four. I'd like to request that the chair of planning kinda lay this out for everyone. So, Mr. Reyes, if you would begin on item four.
Thank you, Council President. And colleagues, we go through a process that speaks to how we create environments for our communities to establish perspective from the stakeholders, and it comes in the form of a community plan. What's in front of us today is the Hollywood Community Plan, a plan that essentially begins back in 2005 and has gone through a series of meetings. Informally, we have recorded over 100, close to 160 meetings, and formal meetings, 10 official meetings, that go back to the kickoff on April 27, 2005. And since then, we've had a series of workshops, joint meetings with the previous Community Redevelopment Agency and the Planning Commission. They've gone through draft EIR discussions, on and on. So this has been going on for some time now, close to seven years. This is the first community plan since 2004, when Silver Lake, the Echo Park Community Plan was first adopted back in 2004. The last time the Hollywood Community Plan was adopted was in 1988. Since 1988, we've had a red line constructed. We've had five stops, transit stops, that have been established. So as you can see, it is about time that we begin to develop a process that speaks to how the community wants to define itself in this area. The main objective is to understand the notion of compatibility, what fits. And so in many areas, you have existing entitlements that have yet to be stimulated, that would allow for very high structures, structures out of character. And if it was not for this current community plan, many of those structures would be able to be built. This allows for protections for our historic structures, for our residential pockets, but it also begins to drive and recommends where it can be built, it being the density, it being the higher structures, it being the mixed-use complexes around our rail stations. So I want to give the council members of the districts that share these areas a lot of credit and kudos to you, because it's been a long time. Seven years in the trenches, working through these issues, being able to absorb all the different perspectives. And colleagues, as you know, in Plum Committee, I know I've done a good job, and everybody walks away upset, a little angry, because not everyone got what they wanted. It's about balance. It's about approaching how we can address our priorities within the context of a great metropolis we call Los Angeles. So I look forward to the public hearings. We are in the final phases of this process. We are in a place where we can define ourselves, and this is community-driven. For those of you who have asked the Planning Department to have this document available to you that speaks to all of the main points of what it does and doesn't do, and I won't spend my time going through all the detail, but again, I want to congratulate the planning staff, the city attorney's office, and the whole city family in addressing the whole spectrum of issues and trying to create an environment where the community can drive its future based on processes that have been folded into the community plan. So that being said, thank you, Council President, and my colleagues, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Reyes, thank you for your hard work on this, and all the members of the Plum Committee, to our Planning Commission, to the community who's come out for, like I said, over 160 meetings plus the 10 official ones. It was actually, if I can date it back, in 2001, I became a member of this city council, elected representative, not just for my district, but with a responsibility for the city. I was told the last two community plans to be updated, which were, sorry, Silver Lake, Echo Park, and Hollywood would be done in a couple of years. Well, three years later, we had the Silver Lake Echo Park one. There was similar fear, as well as listening to the community. There were some who said, "This is going to gut the character of the community," and others who said, "Please let us put in some of our values into this." And I think both Silver Lake and Echo Park and some of the areas that covers have really been examples of great neighborhood revitalization. And here in Hollywood, we kept waiting and kept waiting and kept waiting. Part of it was resources, part of it was the complexity of the area. But here we are, 10 years later. Now, the easiest thing for some, you know, folks are saying, "Well, this is because of politics." The easiest thing to do would say, "Let sleeping dogs lie. Don't touch anything. Keep it the way it is." But we're working off a community plan from 1988. And I think all of us could agree, if we were to freeze-frame one year in Hollywood's history, 1988 would not be our most august year. It was a year that I remember in this city, going there. I used to go, and with my father, we got our haircut on Highland right across from Hamptons at Gianelli Square. And, you know, I would ask my dad who those people standing on the corners were. We would see prostitutes, drug dealers. We'd get a quick hamburger, and in the flats of Hollywood, certainly, something that was on the edge of revitalization for 30 years, it had not been realized. Crime was out of control. Friends and neighbors that I know had to go door-to-door to try to take houses back from crack dealers. And it's undeniable, the progress that we've collectively made over the last 10 years to bring, to cut violent crime by about 66%, to look at other things that we have done, have resulted in making sure that we now have, in Hollywood, the beginning of a comeback and certainly unfinished work. We have a plan today that should both address fears and also address people's hopes. And in some ways, I understand with the community, because I've listened and had many conversations one-on-one with folks on all sides of this issue. And in reality, I think people are trying to create two different sides. There are really quite a number of individual subneighborhoods in here, listening to Tom Labonge and the work that I do to support him for the Hill areas, in the flats. Mr. Coretts has some of those areas as well. There's three council members that are part of this Hollywood Community Plan, I think, have not only listened to many of the same things that our planners have, but we want to say that this shouldn't just be a reflection in the city of the things we fear, but of the things that we hope for as well. And in some ways, this should be called the Hollywood Zoning Plan, because that's what it is about. And I know a lot of people asked about other things, which I'll address a little bit later, police deployment and fire, the number of parks, how many schools we have. This is a zoning plan, but that doesn't limit Mr. Labonge and Mr. Coretts and all of us around here from addressing, as we have, other concerns that aren't formally part of a land use document but are critical concerns to a community. But what we want right now is to stop being defenseless. Today, as was mentioned by Mr. Reyes, we can see in certain areas where there are not height restrictions, like on our most famous corridor, right there on Hollywood Boulevard, that we do not have those restrictions today, and big developments can come on Hollywood Boulevard, which is on the national register, if we don't put some protections in there. Today, we don't have anything that takes into account the fact that people walk now, that there are bicyclists. People can come in with their cars and park there, but then go to things like the farmer's market on foot, can go see a movie at the ArcLight Cinema. The way folks are living in different parts of Hollywood has changed as well. But I also want to thank community members who have changed this plan with us. I have agreed with many of the criticisms. While the Planning Department did, I think, a very good job, it didn't mean that they did a perfect job. And so whether it was the conversations with Melrose Hill and putting and making sure a historic preservation overlay zone, which was the first in the city, has additional protections, that we stepped things down near residential areas, that we changed what was given to us in the draft. Those wouldn't be here today were it not for your input. In looking at what we want to do here today, let's make sure that we keep development out of the hillsides, and let's keep it out of residential neighborhoods. Let's make sure that we plan for the option that if growth occurs, we aren't flat-footed like we were for 20 or 30 years. I walk door-to-door once a month. Many of you have done along with me, and we knock on doors and talk to folks. It's a pretty sobering thing when somebody opens up their apartment. You expect one family to be living there, and there's three families living there, because there was no planning that went into what happened with the growth that is there. But just as we did in Silver Lake and Echo Park, planning for if growth comes, how to deal with it, does not mean that growth has to come. I think I want to address that square on today that many people think, if you change that zoning, that means people will push there. People are free in this city. We live in a free society. To move, as they did to Mr. Zines and Mr. Englander's district, to move out of Hollywood because it's overly dense in certain parts, those things will occur. It's whether or not we plan for the occasion when people come in, whether we have an existing infrastructure, the schools, the fire, the police, the zoning that will best deal with that. And right now, I want to make sure we have those protections in. Mr. Labonge and I will be talking about that. I think we both agree, as many people who are, quote-unquote, opponents of this, who I think have the same values that we do, that we should not have mega developments. That's not in the scale of what Hollywood is. It is a regional center, not a downtown. And I think that in this plan, we will go through, and hopefully hear from the Planning Department, ways that this plan has written that, addressed that, and again, addresses not just our fears in this city, but our hopes as well. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. I first of all want to thank the Planning Department, and I want to thank the public for their participation in this. Planning is so important, and as you mentioned, a zoning plan. I remember when I first got here in 1976, they were trying to update the 1973 plan, Councilwoman Peggy Stevenson. Then later on, it was 1988. Now again, several years later, we look at this effort here. The thing that I want to thank the Planning Department for your help from me in the last years is mansionization. You've drafted a plan that has made a difference citywide. There's not going to be the mansions in the hills that litter the hills of a big block. There's not going to be mansions on the blocks that litter a neighborhood. This was very important, that your thinking came up with compromises and an avenue that is able to have people enjoy neighborhoods. Very pleased for the HPOZ's that Mr. Kukorian talked about earlier, that in Sunland Dahunga was the second historic monument in the city. The first was out in the West San Fernando Valley in the third district next to the Cantina, right there, the Leonis Adobe. And around this city, there are great historic neighborhoods. The Hollywood Grove, HPOZ, Melrose Hill, the second HPOZ of the city, Spalding Square. All of that and others, Whitley Heights, have been important components. The city of Los Angeles is the city of great neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods that we have need to be protected and guidelines. Prop U did downzone a lot of issues with height, but it didn't downzone Hollywood. This has restrictions on the historic core of what we would call between where Musso Franks is and over to the newsstand. And it's sad in this day and age, when I go to Hollywood on Cowenga and I see the newsstand cut in half because of the changing climate of magazine and newspaper publication. But all that is about change. I am happy that this work has taken place. Not everybody is happy, but everybody has an opportunity to make comment, which they have. And out of that, we look for a better Hollywood, which is so important, because Hollywood goes, so goes the city. And I want to compliment my colleagues and my colleagues on the council for the work that has helped me, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Garcetti particularly, in revitalizing Hollywood. And I especially want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the Hollywood Neighborhood Associations, a variety of them, the Old Neighborhood Association, the Hillside Federation, and the Hollywood Bid, and other bids that have made a difference. So let's carry on. I do want to comment, a brand-new high school last few years, Ellen Bernstein, a brand-new fire station, Engine 82, other infrastructure is needed, but we are making a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Are you...
We can do public comments?
Okay, this is what we're going to do. Since we've had numerous hearings on this item, we are going to have a limited discussion today. We're going to have 20 minutes for those in support, 20 minutes for those who oppose, and so there will be 20 minutes, one minute each, starting with those who oppose. So if I call your name, if you would quickly just come get in line, Susan Palafarino, Tiki Geiger, Jim Van Druzen, Stephen D. Cordova. So the first person that makes it to the mic, identify yourself, and then you will speak.
Yeah. Hello, Susan Polifronio.
Yes.
I'm a 35-year business owner and resident in Hollywood, and we are not anti-growth. A lot of us that are opposed to the plan, we're opposed to parts of it. I think it's really important to consider all the historical aspects of Hollywood, and I don't think it's considered with unlimited height in the areas that are proposed. I was always puzzled by the fact that the height limit proposals only went to Ivar when Hollywood and Vine appeared to me to be a very historical area. And I think that the consideration of 9 million people coming into Hollywood every year is something that is unique to Hollywood, that infrastructure is important, parking is important, height limits are important, livability is important, and we're certainly not against development, but we're against unlimited development just to put in buildings that make no sense. So we really do want a Hollywood that works for all of us, and we don't want to restrict development just to restrict development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Matt, I don't have a card on you.
Yeah, I'm doing public comment, general public comment.
No, anyway, that is not the item. We're on item number four. We are not on general public comment. Sergeant, I did not call his name, you're disrupting the meeting, speaking at the inappropriate time. So please, move away from the mic, and I need Tiki, 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 no, what, sergeants, what you need to do is show him the door. Show him the door, he's disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorney and Sergeants, as he does on a regular basis. Okay, Mr., and for those of you, what we do, we, 90% of the time, we hear general public comment first. And those of you that come here on a regular basis, note that that's the way that I do things. Sometimes there are special considerations, and I try to move things around to run a more efficient meeting. We try to adhere to doing public comment first. Again, 90% of the time, we do. This is a very important item, an item that people in this room have been dealing with for, it's my understanding, seven or eight years. I think that it takes priority, and that's why we're hearing this item this early. So sir, if you'd, are you, Jim Van Druzen? I'm beginning to know your face. So here, come on.
Thank you. My name is Jim Van Druzen, I'm a 40-year resident of Hollywood and opposed to the Hollywood Community Plan in its current form. It is the wrong plan, the wrong place, and the wrong time. It is the wrong plan as the underlying data and extrapolations are incorrect, the results are therefore unrealistic and unworkable. It is the wrong place as Hollywood is situated the base of a mountain range. The primary access north is through a very narrow Kewanga Pass. The traffic pileups in and around Hollywood will cause businesses to lose customers and therefore money, will drive the entertainment industry out of the area, and will cause more people to move out of Hollywood. It's the wrong time since the city has no money and is not going to put in any of the infrastructure improvements required by this plan. The Hollywood Community Plan needs to be sent back to the Planning Department, and a new plan prepared based on current data with a downsized alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if I could have Tiki followed by Stephen Decordova, and if I could get Brad Torgan and Ann Gagan, if you guys could start coming up. Yes, identify yourself and speak.
Teri Gerger.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There have been many concerns raised about the plan, I would like to address just one issue, adding a height limitation to the section of Hollywood from Ivar East to the 101 freeway. The plan discusses an historic Hollywood and places height limitations on most of Hollywood, yet in the area containing the historic Taft Broadway and Capitol Records Building, there is no height restriction. It is inconsistent to acknowledge the historic uniqueness of Hollywood and then allow unlimited height that would dwarf existing historic structures. We should maintain a consistent, reasonable height and scale in Hollywood. It is also important to recognize that height limitation is not a commercial versus residential issue, but an issue that resonates with everyone in the creation of a better Hollywood for everyone. Pasadena and Washington DC are prime examples of beautiful historic district with height limits that are thriving with live, work, retail, grocery, that accommodate both parking and successful transit options. We aren't saying no development, we are asking for a development plan that enhances the historic context of Hollywood. We've delivered to each of you letters from all the Hollywood homeowners and the relevant neighborhood council objecting to the unlimited height. These groups represent well over 50,000 people.
Thank you. Thank you. Sergeants, in case somebody else wants to bring up a sign, maybe we should move the chairs so the council members could see it. The only reason why you were asked to put your sign down is because it really disrupts the view. So with that said, do I have Stephen?
That's me.
Okay, followed by Brad, followed by Ann. Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name's Stephen Decordova. I live on Lorenzo Drive, which is in the Hollywood Hills, particularly in the neighborhood known as the Hollywood Dell. We're a very special area, very unique, judging by the number of little topless minivans that drive around our neighborhoods. I think we're one of the reasons that people come to Los Angeles to visit. I would like to remind everyone, particularly council members Labonge and Garcetti, how fragile our neighborhood is, and a big, a part of that fragility is the very limited portals of ingress and outgress that we have. As it is, my only way to get out to the rest of the world from my home is from Kewanga Terrace, where there is no traffic signal right now. And as it is, in afternoon drive time, I sometimes have to wait 15 minutes to get out. And people don't even leave room, you know, at our intersection. If you increase the density of Hollywood, the way we're talking about doing it, we're going to be prisoners in our homes.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, followed by Ann Gagan. Yes, sir, welcome.
Brad Torgan from the Silverstein Law Firm, on behalf of the La Marada Avenue Neighborhood Association. I realize that term limits crimp institutional memory, but when was the last time Plum held a public hearing on the matter, immediately went into closed session, and then came out in order to send something to council without a recommendation at all? That alone should tell you that there are big problems with this plan. Issues of baseline and alternatives, or lack thereof, have been painstakingly detailed, so there's no need to recount them in the short time I have. If the city wants to accelerate growth in the Hollywood Community Plan area beyond that which is anticipated or projected, which this plan does, then be honest about it, and let's have that discussion. Because as much as we've talked over seven years, we have yet to have that discussion.
Thank you very much. So if I could have Ann Gagan, followed by Jim Giogon, and the Schuslers, Aldana, and Johann Schusler, please come forward. Yes.
Good morning, I'm Ann Gagan, I live in the Hollywood Hills. I think the most compelling testimony was by Pat McCosker of the Los Angeles Fire Department, when he said that 40% of the time, we're not getting to people there on time now, to save lives when people are not breathing, to keep a fire from burning out of control. You can't build a city up right now with the staffing that we have. More lives will be lost, more fires will burn out of control, it is irresponsible, this is dangerous stuff. Shame on you, Eric Garcetti, you have not communicated with any of us in a year's time. As far as the 160 hearings, we asked for records of city planning, there are none, they are a myth. This high-rise density, a non-elegant city that you're creating, it will take a female to clean up the mess you've inflicted on Hollywood. Thank you.
Okay, Jim? Okay, can I get Aldana and Johann Schusler? I don't see you. Come up, I don't see you, Ziggy, Ziggy Cruz, Jim McQuiston. Go ahead, sir.
Jim Gagan, that was my wife, and I love her. 24 hours ago, I work in West Hollywood. 24 hours ago, I drove home where I live in Hollywood Hills near the Hollywood Bowl, it took me 25 minutes last night. Hollywood Boulevard was closed for a very, very, very important film premiere. 25 minutes to get home. If you had a heart attack last night, if you had a fire, you were out of luck for Men in Black Part VII. That's the deal. Higher density, I'm told, from meetings I've been in this very room, higher density will make me want to take your public transit. When I see 17 to 25 people at a bus stop, I'm glad I'm in my car with air conditioning and 12 speakers, that's about it. It's insane, it's an insane thought, that higher density will make us want to take public transit. It's absolutely absurd. I was in this room, and the Plum Committee expressed complete surprise that Vine's not included in this plan. Oh my God, I'm glad we showed up to tell them.
Thank you, Mr. Gagan. Ziggy Cruz, Mr. Jim McQuiston, I called you, Jim, get in line. David Dansky, I called three names, I expect to see three people. Ms. Cruz.
Good morning, I'm Ziggy Cruz, and I live in the Flatlands. Anyway, I'm here today to tell you that we can keep this meeting pretty short, since a really significant component, or new component to CEQA has been added, which means that without recirculating it, it is a failure to proceed right now, which could result and will result in lawsuits. This error cannot be fixed in a final EIR because it forecloses meaningful public review and comment. Feel free to look up a certain case, which was published in 1989, the case is Mountain Line Coalition versus Fish and Game Commission, 214 Cal App 3, 1043. Just go ahead, look it up, this meeting should stop, people should have, you know, equal time to view it, not just your experts, but also the public's experts, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim McQuiston, followed by David Dansky, Joan Erlich, and Gabriella Rosenfeld. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm David Dansky, I've lived in Hollywood for 35 years. I love Hollywood, I've watched it grow, and I've watched the traffic increase to where it's barely acceptable now. And my big complaint is the future density growth, which would have to do with the height restrictions. The Franklin Corridor now during rush hour is almost impassable, it has gridlock, I can't imagine 100% of the people moving in to use public transportation, it's just going to get worse. It doesn't seem like this has been looked into as far as the impact on the infrastructure. So, Mr. Labonge and Garcetti, you're our last line of defense on this, don't let it get as high as they're talking about. Just let Hollywood grow better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim McQuiston, followed by Joan Erlich, founded, followed by Gabriella Rosenfeld, then Rosemary Demonté. Jim?
Jim McQuiston, you have my statement. You'll notice that there's only one item on this that I think you should take with caution, and that is the conversion to commercial from exclusive manufacturing, because that's going to break Hollywood. Now, you know that Disney is preparing Santa Clarita for a big move, and if Disney moves and we get shorter and shorter in the MR1 area, we're going to lose Hollywood, and that's going to affect our tourism as well. I don't want to see that. The other thing I want to say is, as an engineer, you know, we have a great fault in Hollywood, a big one, bigger than the one in San Francisco, that's going to break any minute with a 30-foot movement. And I am concerned about safety, but if we put up signs in those buildings saying, you're taking in the building at your own risk, then I'm happy with it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Joan Erlich?
Hi, thank you for sharing.
Yes, go right ahead.
I've been living in the Hollywood Dell community since 1985, I've been living in Hollywood even longer. I don't want to repeat what anyone else said, so first of all, I think it's a grievous error to build tall buildings like the one on Vine Street. People come from all over the world to come to Hollywood, to look at the Hollywood sign, to see the Hollywood Hills. Those tourists bring in tourist dollars, hotels, et cetera. If they can't see the Hollywood sign, if this is just density, and it looks like any other urban area, we're going to lose tourism. Second of all, as a resident, I'm concerned about the density and the lack of addressing it. I already have trouble getting out of my neighborhood, it's becoming too crowded. Also, the idea of density, these studies are really old, they're talking about needing more businesses. There are blocks and blocks and blocks in Hollywood of empty office buildings in this economy. I think we need to do something to fill the current buildings before we consider building additional buildings and adding additional height. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriella Rosenfield, Rosemary Demonté, Rosemary Demonté, Fran Rittenbach, you can start coming back. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Demonté, I live in the Hollywood Community Plan, and I'm here today to ask you to do the right thing, the right thing, and recirculate the EIR, and please, with the correct data, and then to downsize. You have many good things in the plan that you can just retain. Hollywood is not a skyscraper capital, and it never should be. The people who come here have a vision of palm trees, not skyscrapers. They, the people who have lived here and worked hard here and lived through thick and thin, deserve to have, you know, have tried to live the California dream, and only to have developers and misguided people with the idea that density is the new dream. Those who have lived in, have suffered the quality of life, and I might add, it has been badly, since the time of many of you people sitting on this council. You have to, all I can say is, I'm sorry that we have to see you in court to get justice.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Fran Rosenbach, and I want to see Gabriella.
Gabriella.
Okay, she's gone. Doug Haynes, David Bell. Doug Haynes, David Bell. Okay, Ms. Rittenbach.
Yeah, hi, I'm Fran Reichenbach. I'm here to tell you that seven years of hard, seven years of work to come up with a plan that contains so much inaccurate data is nothing to be proud of. If a young person hands in their homework, and it's just awful, does the teacher give the student kudos because the student spent seven years on it? Detention and a failing grade is more like it. Do the responsible act, send the community plan back for inclusion of census data, correct the population forecast, and add a downzoning alternative, and avoid the lawsuits that are pointed at you right now. By the way, there were no 160 meetings, we did not enjoy that. Only 80,000 people, 80,000 people in all of Hollywood, 80,000 people received these notices. That's pathetic.
Thank you. Doug Haynes, followed by David Bell, and then there's a card someone wrote, Hollywood Community Plan, then they scratched it out, and I think the name, I think, is Shelley Kia. So please come forward, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you very much, my name is Doug Haynes, I'm with the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, I'm joined today by the president of our neighborhood council, David Bell, who's going to speak after me. Of the 160 years sold meetings, I've attended a number of those. I got to say, over the past six years, the problem was initially, every word we heard back from the Planning Department was no. A plan was formulated, and I got to give kudos to Kevin Keller and Mary Richardson, lesser strong people would have suffered under all the screaming they received, unfortunately. But for all those years, up until November, the plan was never modified, until they started to incrementally change it after the initial hearings in November. The problem is, what you're doing is you're taking a plan that was created on the basis of information that turned out to be flat wrong, that we have population increase, we have dramatic decrease proceeding in Hollywood over the past two decades of 16,000 people. And because of that, what we have is an opportunity for quality of life to finally be addressed. The CRA is gone, but instead, we're retaining the R4 and R5 zoning, particularly along the 101 freeway in many areas, those people are going to be dramatically impacted if we retain that, there's no purpose for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, David Bell, Shelley Kia, Tony Clark. Tony Clark, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's David Bell, I'm the president of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. We've, we've come out against the plan, I know there have been dozens of meetings, anyway, that I've been to, town hall meetings, workshops, personal conversations with some of the leaders, and we keep saying we don't like the plan. The people who I represent in my community talk to me about issues like traffic, crime, crumbling infrastructure, poor health, bad education, and almost complete lack of parks and open space in our community. And the plan really doesn't do anything to address those issues, it's based upon discredited data, which is no longer valid, and it looks like just an excuse to hand over the future of our neighborhood to developers who have a bad track record of doing good in our community. And I just don't trust them, and it looks like it's an... And I just don't trust them, and it looks like it's an opportunity to take the members of my community and put us here at the podium for our sixty seconds and take our seat away from the table. And that's why we're against the plan.
Thank you. Okay, Shelley, Tony Clark, and if I can add to the line, Sarah Jane Swartz. Please, go forward.
My name is Shelley Kia, and I have been a resident of Whitley Heights for the last fourteen years. I oppose the plan in its present form simply because it is based on flawed data and incorrect data. The plan assumes a population of Hollywood will increase to two hundred and fifty thousand by the year 2030, when, in fact, it has decreased seven percent over the last twenty years with no indication of growth. What desperately needs to be done in Hollywood is an overhaul of infrastructure emergency and emergency response time. President of the Fireman's Union called this plan deadly. With increased density, which is what will result from this plan, where are the improvements in evacuation procedures, fire, safety, and public transportation? We do live in an earthquake zone. This plan is a developer's dream. I implore you, don't think in terms of density and campaign contributions. Think in terms of downzoning and height limits.
Thank you. Tony Clark, Sarah Jane Swartz, Joanne DiAntonio. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Tony Clark. I've been a resident of thirty-eight years of Hollywoodland, which is part of Beechwood Canyon. It extends all the way down to Franklin. This density plan is too much. We have gridlock twice a day at six o'clock, and again at ten o'clock at night. If you try to come home, it takes more than a half hour to get between sunset up past Franklin. Right now, we cannot afford to have that. I am also a member of, or trustee of, the board of the Hollywood Arts Council. I'm not speaking on their behalf, but we have tried to preserve the art in this community. The Hollywood sign, the Grammans Chinese Theater, and the Capitol Building are the three icon landmarks that are there. The Capitol Building will be gone, and it will no longer exist. People will not see it. And plus, we put the Jazz Wall on there, and we're restoring it, and it'll be forever banished, and you won't be able to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Sarah Jane Swartz, Joanne DiAntonio, and George Abrams. Did I call you already, George? Why don't you start heading up this way? Okay, Ms. Swartz.
Sarah Jane Swartz, I've been eagerly awaiting decades for appropriate development in Hollywood. Now it's your turn, your responsibility, to save Hollywood. We're currently living with the plan written in the eighties. That plan, which overestimated population growth in Hollywood, has brought us gridlocked streets and population loss as residents flee the highest-density areas. Skyscrapers, unthinkable in the eighties, have been approved on streets that are no bigger than widened alleyways. Now you get a second bite at the apple with this new plan. Using common sense, why would you repeat and compound the very mistakes that we've been living with and allow additional monuments to poor planning and to finally bury Hollywood? We need further and significant downzoning. Councilman Garcetti assured me on Friday that he is against skyscrapers anywhere in Hollywood, and that height limits should be set using the twelve-story Taft Building as the maximum. For this reason and others, this plan is not ready for final approval. This Hollywood plan is the first.
Thank you.
Other city areas will follow.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Joanne DiAntonio, I'm the safety chair for the Hollywoodland Homeowners Association and a twenty-five-year resident of Hollywood. The real elephant in the room is not PETA's worthy cause, but historic Vine Street north of Hollywood Boulevard, which that will lose its character by, will have its character destroyed by tall buildings overshadowing the iconic Capitol Records Building. QC 22D is listed in the paperwork for this area. What does the Vermont Western Station plan have to do with Vine Street? The expectation of congestion from increased building will drive away business. So why all these tall new buildings? I worked for a business that fled the Taft Building due to increased congestion. Bicycles won't solve the problem. It is not a safe area for bicycles. I saw a car nearly kill a cyclist on Vine Street in front of Trader Joe's. We have a high business vacancy rate in Hollywood. Don't give in to the misguided developers.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, as, George, we're over your time, but I'm going to let you speak.
Yeah, well, our twenty-minute clock was running for about a minute when you were throwing that creep out, so give us a minute back. Okay.
You can say some things that I can't. Go on, George. I'm going to let you speak for a half hour.
Okay, trying to introduce new data via these last week's additions after the draft EIR has had a public comment period is legally impermissible without a recirculation of the EIR. If the HCP in its current form is passed, you will only delay the implementation of a legal plan that will serve the entire community, and you'll just be blowing a lot of money on a time-wasting legal battle.
Thank you. Also, I want, if there, I think that's everybody that signed up, again. But, but relax. Let me restate it. We have finished the twenty minutes. I do want to acknowledge that we had individuals that came that did not want, wish to speak, but they wanted to go down as opposed. And I want to assure everybody that all of those cards will go into the record indicating that they were in opposition of this moving forward. Now, Madam Clerk, if you could, now, Madam Clerk, if you could restart the clock, and we will now hear from the individuals who are supportive of this project, starting with, I believe, David Ambrose, Scott Campbell, Stephen Widdon, please come forward. I called three names. I'd like to see three people. I'm missing one. Go right ahead, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is David Ambrose. I'm a ten-year resident of Hollywood and a member of the Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. This update represents tens of thousands of citizen volunteer hours, including a heck of a lot of my own. I can personally attest that I attended many of those mysterious meetings, which some say did not occur. I think at this point in the planning process, what we can't allow to happen after all the citizen input, both nonprofits, businesses, faith institutions, is for a heckler's veto to take down this great work about where we've arrived. The Planning Department recognized this was not about residents versus businesses from the onset, or growth versus not growth. In fact, it's about all of that together. I was part of a diverse coalition, and there is solidarity within our community, both business, faith, nonprofit, and residents, in support of this plan. This is more than just about Hollywood and Vine. I live in a part of Hollywood that is not Hollywood and Vine. In fact, there's twenty-five square miles before you today, and I wish we could talk about something besides that intersection. That is a vital piece, but there is so much more to this plan, and even that is not necessarily an issue that cannot be overcome through thoughtful dialogue. Thank you.
Next, if you'd come and identify yourself.
Certainly.
And if I could add to the line, I think it's Alfredo Hernandez. Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Campbell. I'm president of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and we have come out in support of this plan. The existing 1988 plan and this proposed 2012 plan update would both permit larger-scale development along Vine Street corridor. This is not something new to the plan update. This is a plan update, and therefore does not address specific projects, such as the proposed Millennium Project. All those projects must move through their own discretionary process with their own project analysis to be approved, and the Millennium Project has been filed under the current plan, and nothing further is allowed under the new plan. This plan does not raise the threshold for site-specific project review. It maintains a six-to-one FAR limit in central Hollywood and raises the baseline FAR from three-to-one to four-point-five-to-one within the regional center-use land designation. The Manhattanization argument is misleading and diverts attention from the matter at hand. Other than two pieces of land owned by Millennium, there is no land available within Hollywood's regional center or in the Vine Street corridor to accommodate large-scale development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Alfredo Hernandez, Bill Harris, please come up. You save yourselves time when I call your name and you come up. Sir, identify yourself and go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Stephen Widdon, chair of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council, and I'm here representing myself. I also live and work in Hollywood, and I support the plan. More than twenty years ago, the city spent billions of dollars to build a subway system with the goals of accommodating density along the stops and reducing traffic by ten percent. Hollywood is fortunate to have three stops, and the update to the existing plan helps us achieve these intended goals. I feel it would be irresponsible not to plan density along the transit corridors. Rather than adding to traffic congestion, fifteen-plus of my colleagues and I took the subway to this meeting that removed fifteen cars off the streets and freeways. The update provides a sustainable and livable plan for Hollywood's future, a creative place to live, work, play, and shop in Hollywood. The plan encourages walkability and an active pedestrian street experience. A brief comment about population changes in Hollywood since the 2010 census was completed, twelve-hundred-and-fifty apartment units have been completed with a combined ninety-one percent occupancy rate. I congratulate the planning staff and ask you to approve the plan update.
Alfredo Hernandez, Bill Harris, Kitty Gordillo? Yolanda Brown or Brown? When I call your name, don't be shy. Come on, identify yourself.
My name is Kitty Gordillo. I'm the development director for the Hollywood Wilshire Y. I also serve on the Sunset and Vine Bid Board and am a chamber member. The Hollywood Y is in support of the current updated community plan. The Y has over eight thousand members, of which many of those are families and seniors that depend on our facility for their recreational and healthy living needs. We recognize the need that for growth, we have an increase in membership even in these difficult times, and the plan supports that. The plan includes, it creates more open space, which is a huge need for the area, which is also something that we'll be able to make use of as well. The plan also includes sidewalk linkage between housing and businesses and other amenities, and that follows along the line with the YMCA's goal for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. Identify yourself.
I'm Yolanda Brown, and I pastor Blessed Sacrament Church in Hollywood with three thousand families that live in districts served by councilmember Garcetti, Labonge, and Coretts, many that have needs of this community plan. So in support of this community plan, particularly affordable housing, employment, quality education, as well as open spaces, we underscore the affordable housing component, but we are in support of the plan. We thank the planning committee and in support of the metro and transit system. I am a TAC card-carrying user. Thank you.
Thank you. Rudy Salinas, Fabio Conte, Beth Marles, please come forward. And if you're there first, just go right up and speak.
Good morning. My name is Rudy Salinas, and I am the director of Community Outreach for PATH, people assisting the homeless. I work with many organizations in Hollywood that are trying to end homelessness in Hollywood by 2018. I come today to speak in favor of this plan, which calls for attention to the need for affordable living options for our neighbors in the plan area who are homeless. In the last homeless count that we conducted in 2009, we identified approximately thirteen hundred individuals homeless in an area smaller than the twenty-five-square-mile area covered in the community plan. In the core part of downtown Hollywood alone, we counted thirteen hundred unsheltered individuals living on the streets. We urge you to adopt this plan, which calls for the construction of permanent supportive housing for the homeless, policies to encourage the creation of low-income housing through density bonuses, adaptive reuse of existing structures, and other development incentives. Adapting a plan with these policies intact will provide more certainty to developers and investors who may be interested in helping to provide housing opportunities for the most disadvantaged in Hollywood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Fabio Conti. I'm a resident and small-business owner in Hollywood for twenty-three years. I'm lucky enough to be able to walk to work. I know a lot of people would like to do that. I saw the resurgence of Hollywood happening as irreversible. I think the plan can only make it faster and better. It's a joy to see all these people walking around our neighborhood on a Saturday night, going to movies, going to shows, and just enjoy the restaurants. This plan supports more walkability around, open spaces. I have four-year-old twins. Every time once you go to the playground, we need to get in the car and drive somewhere. Really, we don't want to do that. We want to leave and enjoy Hollywood. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, sir. Beth, followed by Jeff Briggs, followed by Brandon Mason. Identify yourself.
I'm Beth Marles, vice president of Musicians Institute in Hollywood, where I've worked for twenty-five years. I'm in support of the plan. Currently, there are twenty-four thousand college and trade school students in Hollywood attending eighteen schools from Stella Adler in Second City to L.A. City College, L.A. Film School, Musicians Institute, Cordon Bleu, L.A. Recording School, and more. This plan will create more green space, bike lanes, safer, more walkable streetscapes and alleys. It protects our legacy of historic architecture and neighborhoods. It encourages the growth of diverse retail and entertainment amenities, affordable housing options, and a better quality of life that is the direct result of intelligently-designed urban planning. This is human-scale development, and it's what our students deserve. I know this because it's exactly what they've been telling me they want for years. Students want to live and study and walk the streets of a better, smarter, greener, and even more vibrant Hollywood. They used to be embarrassed by the decay of the city. Now they love the metro and all the incredible improvements of the last fifteen years. We still have more work and more growing to do, but I, for one, embrace the vision of a 21st-century-evolved Hollywood, and for the sake of our students, I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Jeff Briggs, Brandon Mason, Sarah McPherson. Sarah McPherson.
My name is Jeff Briggs. I've lived and worked in Hollywood, and I own a small business on Sunset and Wilcox in the heart of the corridor. For years, I have commuted within Hollywood by bicycle. I walk. I've used Zip Cars, and I regularly use the subway and the bus. As a small-business owner and a resident, I shop, entertain, live, and work in Hollywood, and I get around by all those means of transportation and only seldom have to use my car. We already have a transit-friendly community in Hollywood. The community plan extends and supports that environment. New developments will add to the bicycle and Zip Car opportunities and infrastructure that will support the subway. Older buildings, like the one I'm in, will follow suit. By approving the community plan, the city will be walking its talk about transit-friendly communities. I do all I'm supposed to do for traffic and environment, and by approving the community plan, you'll be doing your part as well.
Thank you. And, sir, identify yourself, please.
Greetings, Honorable Counsel. My name is Brandon Mason. I am standing before you today as a resident of CD-13 and in support of the community plan update. Just to make note of it, I took the red line to get down here, much like many of the other individuals. As one of the younger individuals in this room regarding this particular item, I'd like to speak on behalf of the future of Hollywood, a generation that thrives in an urbanized environment. We want to live where we work, be capable of enjoying the local attractions, and flourish amongst the abundant life in our streets. Again, like many in this room, I, too, eat, sleep, and breathe Hollywood every living moment. So admittedly, I am able to brag to my friends and family afar that we are fortunate enough to have some of the most creative and intellectual individuals in our workplace, our community, and very importantly, representing us civically. So for those of you fearful that passing of this plan will allow for construction developments potentially detrimental to our community, I confidently believe that those who volunteer on the mini boards promoting Hollywood, our countless voices in the neighborhoods and elected officials before me will together see that those plans submitted
Thank you.
will reflect the types of development we need.
Thank you. So Sarah McPherson, Thor Lee Michael Malik. Yes.
Hello, my name is Sarah McPherson, and I'm a proud resident of CD-4. I have lived in the Hollywood Community Plan area and loved it for twelve years, and I support this plan. The plan promotes smart, socially-just growth, preservation of historic neighborhoods, and new frontiers in open space, including freeways and alleyways, which we could have never imagined. I am looking forward to starting a family here, taking advantage of schools, parks, and all the amenities that we would need within walking and biking distance. I plan to be here for a long time, long after the population projections and the plan eclipse. I went, I want the city to look at a longer-term vision for the city, which this plan provides, and that is why I urge you to support this plan today. Thanks.
Thank you. And if I could get Carrie Morrison to come to the center aisle, and Laron Gubler. Yes, sir, you are?
Good afternoon, Alfredo Hernandez.
I didn't call you. Where were you a half hour ago?
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, I'm going to cut you some slack because you look like a nice young man.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I am Alfredo Hernandez, a founding board member of East Hollywood Neighborhood Council and friends of the Hollywood Central and Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, lifetime Hollywood resident and supporter of the Hollywood Community Plan Update. Much has been said about population numbers. I respectfully refer to the, ask Council to refer to the Planning Department's thorough explanation included in EIR's master responses. Population is not static and is driven by many forces. The update accommodates a level of development higher than the current population, but in terms of residential planning, the update uses a smaller number than the already approved framework, as explained by Kevin Keller at the April 17th Plumb Meeting. The update focuses and conserves existing neighborhoods, provides expanding housing options and choices, and directs growth around transit and away from lower-density neighborhoods in existing communities. The update balances the needs of the entire community for the entire plan update area. Please vote to support the update today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thor Lee, Michael Malik, Carrie Morrison, Laron, oh, I see Leroy in the back. Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Thor Lee. I'm a native Angelino. I've worked in Hollywood now for 11 years, and I've spent the past year living in CD 13. And I hark back to what Councilman Garcetti had mentioned about Hollywood in the 80s. I was a young man and came out a handful of times, and it just was never inviting. It wasn't a comfortable place to be. Flash forward 30 years later, and what a great community we have. It's on the rise. I look around and I see some of the new opportunities for our young people and some of the opportunities we have to grow in a positive and thoughtful way. I believe that the, all those that are developing properties are adding value to our community. It's a great thing that we have going with some sensible growth patterns. I encourage you all to support the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Mike Malik. I'm the President of the Hollywood Media Business Improvement District. I'm a past president of the Boys and Girls Club of Hollywood. Many of you have supported our various efforts, and we're, I'm here today to support the hope for passage of the Hollywood General Plan. This plan will streamline the process for people developing in Hollywood. It will reduce the cost of the process, and it will help us correct the blight on Santa Monica Boulevard, Historic Route 66, which in many places has a .5 FAR, which inhibits owners from upgrading their properties because they don't have the wherewithal to go through a very cumbersome process that I believe this plan corrects and will enable us to hopefully turn that boulevard, which right now is in a very poor state, into a wonderful state. And I strongly encourage you to support it today. I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Morrison.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Morrison. I'm going to speak with a different hat on today. I have been in Hollywood for 16 years. I live in Council District 4. I'm speaking, I belong to a church in Hollywood. It's been in existence for seven years. When I discovered it, it had 75 people. It meets every Sunday in the old Pacific Warner Theater on Hollywood Boulevard. 900 young families, young people coming to this church on Hollywood Boulevard. I'm on the Board of Elders, and this is a group of people who would like to live in Hollywood. I'm on the Police Activities League Board. We only have seven soccer teams because we don't have enough fields for our children to play on. We need the Hollywood Central Park. Many of you know that I'm involved with Hollywood Forward. I'm a LASSA Commissioner, and I echo what Rudy Salinas says. We have homeless neighbors in Hollywood who need housing as well. This is a 25-mile area of Hollywood. We are united. We believe in a future for all residents, all demographic groups, all members of our community, and I urge you to support this plan.
Thank you. Laron Gubler, Gary Tobin, Robbie Hunter, if I could see the three of you come up. Okay, go ahead, Laron.
Good morning. I'm Laron Gubler, President and CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce for the last 20 years. And I can say, 20 years ago, Hollywood was a place people did not want to visit, and as a result, we lost all but one television station, all of the radio stations, and numerous entertainment firms that left Hollywood. We have made enormous progress since that time, and now people want to be in Hollywood. The community plan update will pave the way for businesses to return to Hollywood and help to strengthen L.A.'s tax and business base. We have an opportunity to implement smart growth principles and to create an urban village where jobs, residents, shopping, and entertainment are all in close proximity. If you can't implement smart growth principles in Hollywood, where can you? Please approve this plan update today. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie Hunter, Gary Tobin, Jerry Newman, yes, Robbie.
Robbie Hunter, 1626 Beverly Boulevard. I represent the Building Trades. We represent 100,000 construction workers in Los Angeles County, many of whom live in Hollywood. We built, we support the Hollywood Community Plan. We believe the plan reinforces Hollywood's role as a media and entertainment job center, preserves industrial and media areas, and allows for responsible development. We built Capitol Records. We constructed the Hollywood sign. We built Man's Chinese Theater, all of the studios, and recently, we've been involved in the construction of Emerson College. We believe all these things add to Hollywood. We think this plan will allow for responsible development and will still allow for jobs, so we are in support of the plan.
Thank you. Jerry Newman, Lori Goldman, Jeff Zarinan.
Mr. President, members of the Council, my name is Jerry Newman. On behalf of Gary Tobin as well, Gary has asked me to present because he had to leave for a meeting, that the L.A. Chamber of Commerce supports this plan, and has submitted a letter to you on behalf of myself. It is important to note that this plan does not guarantee height or density. It allows for height and density in areas that are appropriate. It allows for a discussion by you to take place on a project-by-project basis, which is very important to understand. In the Vine Corridor itself, the Vine and Hollywood Corridor, it does not change the unlimited height restriction that exists today, and it does not add density in any way that isn't there already today. So those conditions exist. It is also important to note that this is an update. As an update, from a SEQUA standpoint, it does not require the broad spectrum of mitigations or the broad spectrum of alternatives that would normally be required for a plan that comes to you wholesale. So from that perspective, I advise you or would request that you look at this as what it is.
Thank you.
An amendment and an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've run out of time, but the last two people that I called, Lori and Jeff, will be afforded the opportunity to speak. Anyone else who filled out a card, your card will go in under the approved side. So Lori.
Good morning. Lori Goldman, Officer and Board Member, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee on the Update, and President of Friends of the Hollywood Central Park. CHNC supports this update. It reflects our stakeholders' desires and designates land for the range of uses needed to provide housing, jobs, transportation, and amenities in our neighborhoods. The majority of the land use changes for height and zoning are within our boundaries, and I've brought you two maps to see that. According to the 2010 census, Central Hollywood has experienced a 6.3% increase in population, which validates and supports the update's proposed increase for commercial housing and commercial businesses within Central Hollywood. We also ask you to support the CPIO-specific plan, which ensures enforceability of mitigation measures for infrastructure, traffic, emergency services. And we want to thank Kevin and Mary.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Are you Jeff?
Yes. I am Jeff Zarinan. I was born in Hollywood almost 50 years ago and reside and live in the Hollywood Hills. I am the President and Chair of the East Hollywood Business Improvement District. The East Hollywood BID is now in its sixth year and represents property owners in the eastern section of Hollywood, stretching north on Vermont Avenue from the Hollywood Freeway to Bond's Park. Major property owners include L.A. City College, Hollywood Presbyterian Hospital, Kaiser Hospital, and Children's Hospital, among others. Our board has reviewed the Hollywood Community Plan and voted unanimously in support. The plan has the best interests of Hollywood in mind. We believe good planning will result in a better Hollywood. Please support and vote today to pass this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. And again, I want to thank the community and the public for participating. I'd like to call up the Planning Department just to address a few questions for the sake of clarity and reinforce the level of analysis and work that's gone on in this process for the past seven years. There's an image that was given that spoke to a huge tower next to the Capitol Building, which is a historic structure. A question to you is this. Given that this plan key objective is to create compatibility, can these large structures emerge overnight? Are they given by right? Can you speak to the process that speaks to how the stakeholders participate before such a structure could even emerge? Can you speak to that?
Thank you. Michael O'Grane for the record, Director of Planning. Along with me, I have Kevin Keller, our Senior City Planner, who's been steering up this plan for a number of years, as well as Connie Palini. I'll have Kevin respond to that question, since he's spent a lot of time on this issue.
Thank you. Kevin Keller, City Planning. One of the comments we've heard a number of times are the issue of height and scale in the Hollywood Community Plan. The community plan does direct growth to the regional center of Hollywood, which is an existing regional center as identified in the general plan framework. At the same time, it includes height limits for areas outside that regional center area, directing growth away from the hillsides. The plan is adding height limits in another number of areas. However, the key corridor of the Hollywood-Vine intersection does not currently have height limits. That being said, that doesn't necessarily mean that development is by right in those areas. The site plan review thresholds still are in place, which requires that any project over 50,000 square feet go through a discretionary process with project-level-specific environmental analysis and
Well, let me just tell you on that point. So there is discretionary processes for any structure that goes over 50,000 square feet, you said?
Correct. Generally, 50 units or 50,000 square feet triggers a discretionary process that both analyzes project-level environmental impacts and requires a site plan review analysis.
So both property owner, developer, and all that's impacted by these particular projects will be notified?
Actually, there's also the major project conditional use. The major project conditional use is any project of essentially 100,000 square feet of non-residential floor area. There's a little bit of detail there, but that also requires a public hearing and approval by the Planning Commission as well. So certainly, the thresholds of development are not being changed in the plan. The city does allow by-right development below that scale. However, that scale if triggered, and certainly a tower, and I can't comment specifically on any tower because that's not in front of us today, but generally, a tower of that size and scale would trigger one of these requirements.
And the reverse is true, that there are sections within the residential pockets and the hillside areas and the historic that are not protected because of the allowable existing heights that are permitted if it were not for this committee plan.
Correct. That's correct. We have many protections in the plan. For example, in the hillside areas, we limit the ability for someone to come in on speculation and split large lots into multiple lots and impact those drastically small roadways. There's also protections in terms of historic preservation along the Boulevard and other areas, expansion of our historic preservation overlay plan, and as well as additional survey going on with Survey LA of the Hollywood community area to enhance our ability to know what our historic resources are and to protect those from future development.
Okay. So in closing, I want to say first thank you to you, to the staff for their yomen's work in getting us to this point, albeit it's been seven years. But then again, we are struggling with half of the staff being gone for almost two years now. So to get to this point, it's kudos to you and the ones that are out there at 8:00, 9:00 PM with the lights on, making the deadlines. So I thank you for that extra work. To the community, I want to say thank you to you for your patience, and my colleagues for their stewardship throughout because they have been the anchors in making sure that the community voice is being heard. Again, I know sometimes it's hard when not everyone feels they've got everything they wanted, but in light of what is needed in this very demanding economic environment, that we need to put the necessary protections for our communities and our residential and our historic structures, and for that, I thank you for that balance. Thank you, and I encourage an iVote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alacón.
Honestly, I see both options as being legal and clearly policy considerations. It's really a choice as to which direction the Council wants to go. And it might be nice to be able to be more specific in our community plans and allow the communities to have a more specific view of what their community is going to look like, particularly when they're buying houses, investing in properties, et cetera. But the reality is that it takes us forever to do these community plans. And so my first question is, how long does it, how far behind are we on our community plans? I mean, where would you like to be if you, in perfect world, where would you like to be, and how far away from that are we?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilman. This body has been very supportive of the Planning Department's budget, even in drastic budget years with the reduction of the general fund and our serious economic climate. We've been able to maintain this community plan moving forward. We also have six additional community plans that'll be coming before you through 2012 and 2013 that we've been working on, and this Council has fought hard to preserve that funding for the department to be able to do this. The reality is the staffing levels that we've assigned in the history of the department to these planned efforts have been too low. What you'll see is a city like Pasadena, who takes on a general plan update, the magnitude of our Hollywood community plan, will have five to eight full-time people on here. We have two people on this plan full-time for a number of years, and so a lot of it has to do with how much resource we put to this. The Council has been very helpful in establishing new fees on building permits to help to amplify that funding.
So we are, we are taking longer and longer to complete these community plans?
Actually, we've, in the last two years, we've made extreme measures to shorten that timeline, so you'll see a number of plans. This being the first coming before you.
Not to shorten it, but it's taking us longer and longer, over time.
Over time, these plans have taken a long time, yes.
Okay. So with the city attorney's proposal, would that expedite our process, or would it slow it down even further?
I'm not exactly sure your question, what proposal was that?
The proposal to increase the environmental impact aspects of the plan.
Yeah, we've been, we've been amplifying a lot of the work we have in our review of this plan.
It would just take long, I'm asking if it would take longer to do it that way?
Yeah, perhaps my colleague has a answer to that.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin Keller, City Planning. We've been working on a number of community plans, and through the Hollywood process, we've learned a lot about how to otherwise develop environmental reports for our forthcoming plans. We are working very diligently on the Silmar Community Plan. We are hopeful to have a draft of that plan ready. We look forward to working with your office. We also are working actively in this unit on the San Pedro Community Plan.
Okay, I think we're getting a little far afield. My question is relative to the Hollywood plan. It seems to me the city attorney has recommended that we tighten the screws in terms of the environmental impact.
Maybe I can answer that. Thank you.
And my question therefore is, would, if we did this on every community plan, as suggested by the city attorney, would that not take us longer?
Kevin Keller, City Planning. We've been working with our city family. We did prepare, maybe I could, I'll answer this later, but an EIR response to comment. Certainly, each EIR is unique and different. Depending on the level of responses we received, we did want to prepare additional responses, which has given us some additional work to do on our side. We did complete that work, but each EIR is a little bit different. We do circulate a draft in the community. We listen to responses. We did, as I think we've learned today, we have a high level of response in Hollywood, a lot of valid input, and that's been driving our timeline on this. But I think we have been able to move forward on a number of our community plans.
Okay, that's not my, that wasn't my question, but I'll press my button again.
Thank you very much, Alacón. Before I call on Mr. Weezer, please welcome 93rd Street Elementary School to Council Chambers. We thank all the young students at 93rd Street School. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Welcome, students. And to follow up on Mr. Alacón's questions, yes, having our community plans move forward was a concern of mine during the budget process, when I was alerted that we don't have enough funding in there to move forward after, and if this Hollywood plan is adopted. Fact of the matter is, is that we are way behind in adopting our community plan. Fact of the matter is, is that we are way behind in adopting our community plans, and we don't have the staff in the planning department to do it. During the budget process, I was told that it will take two additional planners that should be funded, should we want to move forward with the six plans, community plans that are in the pipeline and are bottlenecked, because we just don't have the person power to move forward. I had a meeting two weeks ago with the CAO and CLA in the planning department to see how we could get some funding to move it forward. It would cost anywhere in the range of about $200,000. And some of these plans, we already have--we have the funding to do the technical work. They started already, and they're just sitting there because we don't have the bodies. And so, working with the CLA and CAO and the planning department, and Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian from the Budget Committee, hopefully will come up with some creative means to get the funding to move these forwards. It's one of the most basic tenants of the city. You know, you get public safety, you make sure their streets are clean, but not to plan the future is something that we shouldn't fall behind in, because these things, we're missing opportunities about how we want our growth to occur and how we plan for that growth. And a lot of these communities have been waiting for a very long time, so hopefully we'll come up to a solution real quick on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and thank you for a great public comment. I know that there's an extraordinary number of people here, and the comments on both sides, even folks who oppose us moving forward today, who gave compliments to our city planners for listening and changing things, others who said it's all good except for a piece, and those on the pro side, I'm sure there's some things that, in an ideal world, you'd like tweaked a little bit more in another direction or not. But we certainly can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good today. And we should, I think, looking at all of this, realize that we're not a divided community. We have shared values. I didn't hear a different value, actually, on either side of the speakers today. But I think people believe very deeply in the history of Hollywood. They believe that we should have green spaces. They believe that we should have good schools, that we should have efficient emergency services, that there should be shopping and transportation options. All of those are shared values. The only disagreement is about whether or not, how we get to them. And that's pretty unique, because in other communities, people are divided about some of those values as well, about whether they should be residential places or whether they should be commercial, whether we should have schools. Those are sorts of fights that I think shows the maturity, not only of Hollywood, but of the community, moving forward. I wanted to ask the planning department a few different questions. I'll probably speak a couple different times. But some of the criticisms that were made, which, to folks who said I haven't had conversations, I've had hundreds and literally probably maybe even a thousand conversations when folks have visited, I've come and talked to them, and the pews, sometimes been able to address their concerns, other times we've agreed to disagree on them, but we've had a number of conversations, and certain criticisms come up time and time again. And the first is a very broad one. I want to just ask you, does this plan accelerate growth? Because much of the criticism relies on the idea that we take what's essentially a new zoning plan, and that will move people there. Will this accelerate growth in Hollywood? Because, you know, some folks pointed out that we have an even wider plan right now, and we had decreased growth. So if planning by itself, by creating new zoning, automatically moved people there, we would have seen that happen. But what is your opinion in terms of this plan accelerating growth?
This plan definitely does not accelerate growth. What it does is the plans for growth. Rather than looking at a city and a community like Hollywood, project by project, this focuses where there is opportunities for growth around our transit nodes, where there's a transit-rich environment, where we have the right infrastructure to accommodate some managed growth. This plan in no way has unfettered growth in it. It actually protects neighborhoods and protects the character of neighborhoods. And in many areas where we've seen growth go in, where it doesn't fit and it's not appropriate, this will actually goes--this plan goes back, and we've learned from those years of overdevelopment and how to preserve Hollywood's character and make sure that those rich neighborhoods preserve their character, and also have an opportunity, when there is change coming along, that we have design guidelines and infrastructure in place to make sure that growth is managed in an appropriate way.
Cut you off there, because I have a few more seconds, and I'll be pressing my button again for other questions. Tom and I, I think, have played, you know, defense in a community plan that doesn't protect us now. When we've seen, as some folks said, in the very central part of Hollywood, population go up, but we've seen overall population go down, that's because Tom said no development in the hills. That's because in residential areas and the flats, I said, no, it's not appropriate to put that on a residential street. And so, we have put this, just as this community plan, the growth that did occur, which overall was a net decrease, but the growth that did occur, the neighborhoods where it was, were closer to shops, were closer to commercial areas, were closer to the jobs, so that some people, not all people, we're not pushing people to ride the subway, we're not pushing people to get on the bus, and obviously, most people will take cars to a lot of things that they do, but it occurred then in those areas that could better accommodate that. My last thing is, is Vine Street included in this plan? Because I heard from a couple people that Vine Street is somehow cut out of this plan. Is Vine Street not in this plan?
Kevin Keller, City Planning. No, Vine Street, in fact, every street is in the plan. The 26 square miles covers all of Hollywood. We did do a street standard study, looking at all the major boulevards, trying to promote walkability, looking at improving wider sidewalks, maintaining the Walk of Fame. So the Vine corridor is part of the plan, Hollywood corridor as well, Los Feliz Boulevard, maintaining some of the parkways, the trees, trying to reinforce the existing character. And again, guiding growth, if and when it occurs, to the appropriate place. That's what planning is. It's a vision for the future, and if and when growth occurs, the plan helps to guide that growth.
Labange.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I'm concerned about super height. Tell me, I could not stand here and say, I want 56 stories or 46. I think 22. I forget the name of the disco, but it was at Sunset and Vine on the top, a long time ago. It was on the top of the--Avak, you were there, I think. Hey, you were, Avak. 22 stories is the height at Vine Street. Let's say there's a proposal for a high-rise, a 30-story or 40-story, or whatever it is. I think 56 is way too much. What is the process there? Does it just go to the building department on Figaro and get a permit?
Kevin Keller, thank you for that question. No, those projects would normally trigger some kind of discretionary review.
All right, explain that, what project?
Discretionary review. The zoning requirements do permit a floor area ratio of up to six. That's not changed in the existing or the proposed plan. However, to get that extra floor area or that extra development envelope, it would trigger a discretionary view to the City Planning Commission and appealable to the City Council. There is a by-right development envelope within that, but even that by-right development envelope, as we responded earlier, would still trigger site plan review or major project conditional use. So there are public procedures. If you do go through that floor area increase process, it requires a public hearing, it requires a decision by the City Planning Commission, and ultimately, appealable to this body for an ultimate decision.
And is that for anything over 10 stories, or anything over what?
In terms of central Hollywood, it's based on floor area. There are no height regulations per se, but it's based on floor area. The existing and proposed floor area limits as a baseline remain at three to one and four and a half to one.
I absolutely want to make sure it's right. I do believe in the Capitol Records Building. I also believe that the Hollywood sign is iconic, and I don't want to see it blocked. I also believe, if it's approved, whatever the height is, whatever the height is, that there be some type of plaza on the top of the roof, so people could enjoy that signs, and also lessen the burden that people who do live in the deep reaches of the historic Beechwood Canyon would not find someone by their GPS on their front lawn, but have a vista on top of a high-rise, as they do here at the Tom Bradley Tower, which was a visionary building built in 1928. That tower of ours is so important, and if there's anything in Hollywood that is 28 stories high, it should have an observation deck for people to enjoy the vista of the observatory, the Hollywood sign, the ocean in the winter, and downtown, et cetera. Lastly, MTA, subway. If you were going to say one of the mistakes LA made in the past, I say one of them would be no stop at the Hollywood Bowl. That's a forgiven, right? But that no stop of the Hollywood Bowl was driven by people who lived next to the Hollywood Bowl. We have to do the right things. Somehow, I'd like to see us create some transit connection from Hollywood Highlands up to the Bowl. The Bowl is one of the greatest places of all in our cultural community, and that Highland, we have to, Mr. Garcetti, work, as we've talked about, with Jaime de la Vega in the Transportation Department, to do the right thing for that corridor that is there, and also to get more people in the street to direct traffic. It's not about widening the road, it's about controlling the road. And so many pedestrians love the Walk of Fame, and it's a great boulevard, a great boulevard, but the highest concentration of pedestrians are between Highland and Orange on the north side of the street, and sometimes they walk in the street when it says, "Walk, don't walk." And we want to make sure that flows and can be done. I also want to speak out for Hollywood High School, to preserve the high school, which is so important. Mr. Garcetti does a great job. We were able to get lights for their football, for their first in their history, they got lights, which brought a great high school experience for all of them. All that being said, take care of the crossroads of the world. Open it up. Get a little alley down from Hollywood Boulevard, so you can find the crossroads of the world, and always keep Musso Franks open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Now I know why you told me I came back too soon. I'm assuming, had I left you in the chair, I might have saved three minutes of all of our lives. Mr. Garcetti, to close.
Thank you very much. You took the next question out of my mouth, Mr. Labange. I agree. And one of the things I want to reassure folks is, the seat at the table is not taken away. You cannot have unlimited density on these parcels. It has to come through the community, it has to come through the council, and this plan doesn't do that. There's a map behind you that shows all the new height restrictions that are added and any of the new ones that are taken away. All the red are new height restrictions, and there's two small parcels right here and here that go up, and that's just to make sure they're the same height as the new lower limits. This shows the protections of our history, and we want to keep folks at the table. We want that discretion to be able to be there. It's not going to be me that's council member, and while it's not going to be Mr. Labange. The only protection we have for the community is making sure that that discretion stays there with the community, and this plan has written it in. But what we hear about infrastructure, Tom and I are going to continue working on. This morning, we talked about an infrastructure strategy. Zoning plans are not a plan for everything in the world. This plan can't end war. This plan can't make sure that our schools have good teachers in them, but what they can do is inspire two council members to continue that work, that has built triple the number of parks in a council district that didn't have them, 13 to 39. A new high school where there wasn't one in a neighborhood where 50% of the kids couldn't go to school inside their own neighborhood, and that caused us all traffic and destabilized our community. More cops from a new station down Olympic that relieved Wilshire and then relieved Hollywood, and seven years of advocating for more cops on the beat that we got with Chief Bratton that are there today to make sure that it accommodates the infrastructure, people not staying for 23 minutes on average, which tourists did in the late 80s, but now two or three nights, because there is a great community. Let us vote today with our hopes, not with our fears. It doesn't end any conversations or our need to mitigate this. And I'll close with this. Mr. Labange and I, and each one of you, are not abstract policymakers going off to Washington, DC, or Sacramento, not caring about what happens in a land far away. My office is in Hollywood. I work in Hollywood. I'm a stakeholder. When I get stuck in traffic, I suffer the same way anybody else does. Mr. Labange does, too. We want to see that view of the Hollywood sign. We want appropriate plan, but a nightmare is unplanned growth. A dream is making sure that we get out in front and hear from the community and write something that reflects what our aspirations and our hopes for a new city are. I urge your vote--iVote. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you want to say something to me?
Yes, Mr. President. The planning committee is submitted without recommendation, so a motion is required.
President, to certify the EIR here, to adopt the revised finding pursuant in number two, to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission as well, and adopt the resolution recommended by the mayor, the director of planning, and the LACPC approving the proposed general plan amendment to the Hollywood Community Plan, and to present and adopt the revised ordinance, accompanying ordinance, which is Exhibit G, and direct the planning department staff to revise the HCP map, the highways and freeways map of the transportation element, and the long-range land use diagram of the citywide framework element, and update the appropriate zoning maps in accordance with that. And then to adopt the following revisions, which are in number seven here to the HCP, those came from community input, those came from folks telling us in specific neighborhoods what we could do to revise certain zoning and land use that's in that, and to substitute the revised ordinance and resolution and adopt the revised findings. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, will you second that? Or no, Mr. Labange seconds that. Okay, no more speakers in the queue. Lori? You're getting a little loud. You don't want to go visit the other gentleman. Okay, with that said, there are no more speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Okay, now if we could keep it down? If we could keep it down?
Mr. President, Mr. Labange has requested to go forthwith.
Okay, since it's Mr. Labange, then without objection. Mr. Rosendahl.
With, please. We approved it on consent.
15th, forthwith as well. Mr. Krikorian?
Number five, forthwith, please.
Number five, forthwith. Okay, now I'm going to quickly do--Mr. Walsh, I want to ask John Walsh to come forward. We're going to do item 11, Mr. Walsh. I have two cards on you for item 11.
I'm blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org.
In fact, John, just hold a second. Come on, people, let's keep it down. No, I'm a-- You're good? Okay.
Let them talk.
Okay.
They're coming to rape Hollywood, and the rapists are leaving. You're next. To the city of Los Angeles, you're next. You will be replaced by a skyscraper. You're next. HollywoodHighlands.org, we 100% are in favor of proposition in item number 11. You buried my card, but you won't bury me. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Oh, Mr. Walsh, I did not bury your card. I, to be totally honest with you, I enjoy when you come here. I did not bury your card. Okay, on that item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, I hate to have you keep coming up, but we're going to do 12 now. And I have a card, John. HollywoodHighland.org. I have two cards, I think, from John on 12. Yes, sir.
You treat me like the person who cleans up after the elephants. The elephants are leaving. And incidentally, take a look at this. $100,000 for a flyer from the planning department in favor of what you just passed. $100,000 lost.
Come on, John, get on the subject.
Hollywood Highlands, and I will remove what I said about you burying my card. Whatever happened to my card, Eric was behind it. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth, and that's minute number two. Bye-bye.
John, don't go anywhere. Please. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to do item 18, Mr. Walsh. HollywoodHighland.org. 18, two cards from John.
Passing. I'm waiting for a public comment, when I can speak on every item.
Who was it, six? Ed, was that you that called item six?
Yes.
Wait. I didn't-- Okay, we have to vote. I've been informed that we didn't vote. Okay, on item 18, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, we're going to now move to item six. In fact, hold on one second, Mr. Reyes, if you will. Mr. Walsh, we have item 13. Did you want to still wait for general public comment? Okay, so let's do item 13. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so that leaves us with, what, items six and 10?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, let's go to 10. Steve from AFSMI, I can't make out the last name. Crowforth? Oh, Steve, okay, come on.
It's Coffroth. Steve Coffroth, representing the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. You might recognize the name. We've got about 10,000 delegates and guests at our international convention here at the convention center. AFSMI represents the employees at the former redevelopment agency here in the city, and Friday represented the last day for about 80% of those employees. They'll still be paid till the end of the month, but they're being asked to leave to consolidate offices. The city elected to take on their housing responsibilities earlier this year, and if the state doesn't mess it up further, the city is going to get a robust housing portfolio that generates millions of dollars every year. We support the action today to approve three positions, but I want to make sure that you understand that you'll need much more than that. You're doubling about the number of low-income housing stock that you currently have in LAHD. And we want to make sure the city recognizes that you've always treated the CRA as if it was an apartment through your election to have oversight over them. But we're asking at this time that as you fill those positions, as you fill future positions within the LAHD in order to perform these housing functions, that you give the former employees of CRA LA preference in filling those positions and respect their seniority. This is the smart thing to do because they have been doing the work all of these years, and as that work transitions over, they are in the best position to continue to provide those great services for the city. And it's also the right thing to do because it respects that these people would otherwise be out of jobs, and it would negatively impact their families and the economy, and we ask for you to do that in consideration as you approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Correct?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first recommendation on this should be acted on by council. The second one, I believe, can just be referred back to the Personnel Committee without a council vote.
Okay, so on this item, Madam Clerk, there are no more speakers in the queue. So let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us to...
Item six.
Item six.
An amended motion, 6A, has been circulated.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, in the previous discussion regarding the Hollywood Community Plan, we spoke of resources and what we need to stimulate a greater level of support for the Planning Department, given the hardships they're going through with staffing and a tremendous work program. Well, what this does is this allows us to look at the Construction Zone Trust Fund, put together a five-year work program that delivers a dynamic web-based zoning code, layperson's guides to zoning, and a unified downtown development code. Being able to achieve that level of clarity, stimulate efficiencies, look at this notion of predictability is crucial. The last time we did a comprehensive revision of zoning code was in 1946. Majority resources are now devoted to cases, administration, and support. We are in a position now to look at how we can stimulate community planning tools that will result in more planning land, more planning, less reacting, predictable outcomes for all stakeholders, more zoning options that better address community vision and concerns, and more effective integration of private property and the public realm. So we talk about the collapsing of these types of concerns, making it more efficient because the zoning code is that much clearer. That'll take us a long way in updating it. So 1946, 2012, that's a long time. I admire the staff because they are taking on a juggernaut of a project, but it's very necessary, and with today's technology, I think we can reach efficiencies. So I encourage an aye vote. And that should be enough. But let's look at the possibilities of stimulating a level of confidence in our stakeholders and trying to create these efficiencies. So I encourage an aye vote. And there is a 6A. The 6A really is about a more routine update so that we can see the progress, and want to thank Councilman Englander for providing that type of closer loop and getting those updates. So with that, I encourage an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer?
President, I'd also like to add an amendment to this report. Mr. Englander and I were at that meeting when this item came through Plumb, and we directed staff to request the Budget and Finance Committee to include ongoing funding for this project as a direct appropriation to the Planning Department as part of the budgetary adoption process. So this language will include this discussion in the budgetary process so that the Planning Department doesn't have to ask for this each and every year. It will be an ongoing project, so it could go through the budget process through the Budget and Finance Committee. So I'd ask that we amend this report. Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second by Mr. Reyes. Members, are we going to open up public comment on this issue here? Okay, so we're going to have a public comment on this here. If you want to do one minute, if you need a little more, take it. But I'm going to watch the clock. Bob Anderson, Jim McQuiston, William Robson. Ready, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Bob Anderson and represent the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. SOHA supports the proposal to revise the zoning code and recommends funding approval. The proposal envisions a streamlined code that will be more accessible to the public and better address local concerns. Sherman Oaks is a 65,000-person community with both flat land and hillside areas and diverse residential and commercial zoning. We hope the revised code will help SOHA more effectively enforce local plans such as the Ventura Boulevard specific plan. SOHA understands that we are supporting a proposal to conduct a study project for five years, which will revise the code, and are not supporting any specific zoning changes. The project importantly includes significant public outreach. This is critical. SOHA worked on the baseline hillside ordinance with Eric, where we saw the positive outcomes of such public outreach, and he does it very well. We want to work with the department on the code revision project and would like to become part of the project's Public Policy Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim McQuiston?
Jim McQuiston, you have my statement on this. I do support this. It's a little more extensive than just you thinking about it. One of the difficulties that we have with our planning code is that no one really respects it. You look at it, but you don't really follow it. What we really need is a planning code that people are bound to, and that means we need a better planning code to start with. And that's what I hope we will get, but hope is always springing eternal.
Thank you. Jim, William Robson, is that correct? Followed by Ann Williams.
I'm William Raspus, and I don't have a card in for number six. I have a card in for general comment, general public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll call you in a little bit. Thank you. Ann Williams?
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, representing 450 businesses employing over 350,000 people across the Los Angeles region. On behalf of our membership, we support the Planning Department's effort to completely overhaul the zoning code, and we want to commend Planning for being proactive about fixing a code that is truly broken. We also support the five-year general plan maintenance fee increase being proposed. Through this temporary increased fee, the private sector will pay about $1 million each year in support of the zoning code overhaul. We also want to highlight that the third piece of the funding, money from the Construction Services Trust Fund, is also paid directly by the private sector. So adding together the funding from the Construction Services Trust Fund and the increased general plan maintenance fee, we want to emphasize that the private sector is paying for about 2/3 of this effort. With such a significant contribution totaling about $10 million over the next five years, we are going to be monitoring progress closely to make sure that the city's contribution remains at the levels that have been outlined, that the effort stays on track, and that the deliverables are produced in accordance with the work plan.
Ann, thank you. Thank you very much.
We want to thank you for your...
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy Sanchez with the Building Industry Association of Southern California, Los Angeles Ventura Division, and I represent about 1,000 members collectively, and I'm here to support the comprehensive zoning code update. To ditto Ann Williams, the private sector is paying substantially for this program, and I really would like to thank you for including item 6A so that we have some good checks and balances. The development community is paying the majority of these fees, so we don't want to see this project exceed the five-year period. We really want to see the project completed. The zoning code update is going to provide a more predictable ways of getting through the system, letting entitlement is extremely complex, and I think that this is going to really make it much easier for us to get through the system and much easier for staff. So it is important that we stay on track and that the BIA help by participating in an oversight or policy committee. Want to thank staff tremendously for bringing this forward. It is long overdue, much needed, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. The Van Nuys City Hall, Doug Alston, hot. Van Nuys City Hall.
Thank you, council members. My name is Doug Alston of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak from Van Nuys City Hall. VICA strongly supports the department's five-year program to comprehensively revise the city's zoning code. The department's work program is pragmatic and beneficial, including critical steps to clarify and simplify the city's burdensome permitting process. VICA supports the financing plan in whole, including reallocation of the existing revenue sources, as well as new revenues from the general fund maintenance fee increase on a temporary basis. We have agreed to the general fund maintenance fee increase under the condition that the city upholds its promise in its financing plan in its entirety. When VICA supported the 2010 cost allocation plan that called for total cost recovery, we did so with the understanding that the department's entire funding needs would be fulfilled. However, the council failed to uphold its side of the bargain by consistently reducing general fund support for the department. With 2/3, as our colleague at the Central City Association stated, with 2/3 of the code reform financing plan now coming directly from the industry, VICA along with its strategic partners will be watching this program closely to ensure that the fee revenues are used as promised.
Thank you very much, Doug, and say hi to Al out there. Okay, that completes our cards. Completes our cards right now. No speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And that's adopted as amended.
Adopted as amendment. Okay, next, we will have public comment. This time, I'd like to call on Mr. John Walsh, Daniel Sosa, Megan Ryan. Two minutes. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is... How does the Hollywood Community Plan improve Hollywood? It's because $100,000 was handed out. Now, this isn't from the Chamber of Commerce. This is from our own Planning Department. This is illegal. Anybody but Garcetti for mayor. You were here. You folks are watching this. This is the organization. We started anybody but Wu for mayor, and we ended Wu's career. Anybody but Garcetti for mayor. He has taken a calculated risk here. The money he will get from developers is worth the people who are not going to vote for him because, and I hope the New York Times does another story, he is in the pocket of high-rise developers. Anybody but Garcetti for mayor, call his office and tell him that you are a member of anybody but Garcetti for mayor. This is not another New York here. This is another Tokyo. This is another Peking. We're talking about the kind of density that only is seen in the Far East. The capital investor community, I want to speak to you. Do not come to Hollywood. You will lose your money. A German trizacan put in and invested for Hollywood Highlands Mall $700 million and sold it for $200 million. To who? State Teachers Retirement Fund. In other words, I own it now. One-half billion dollars lost. Crime in Hollywood, out of control. Go to crime mapping and check it out right now. LA Times. We are in the top 20 for property crimes of the 209 neighborhoods in the county and the top 30 for criminal, for violent crime. In fact, we have more violent crime per capita than West Compton, than West Compton. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you and goodbye. Daniel Sosa.
Hi, I'm Daniel Sosa. I'm a lifetime resident of Los Angeles. I went to school here, public school, graduate of North Hollywood High School. Also, I'm also a graduate of George Washington University in Washington, DC, where I majored in international affairs and concentrated in global public health. I've lived in Los Angeles my entire life, other than the four years I lived in Washington, DC. And while studying public health and international affairs there, the one thing that overwhelmingly kept on striking us was that overwhelmingly throughout the world, people who are in need don't get the help they need. They don't have the resources to the public health facilities that they need. And in this country, it exists too, and in this city, it exists right now. I'd like to point out a few things, a couple of facts that you guys may not be aware of. The United States has the highest incarceration rate in the world. We incarcerate more people than Iran, North Korea, Burma. The reason we incarcerate more people than any other country in the world is because of nonviolent drug arrests, most of which are nonviolent marijuana arrests. The laws regarding marijuana in this country are inherently racist. They're an extension of Jim Crow laws. If you don't understand or know what I'm talking about, just look up the racial disparity between arrest rates and conviction rates. They're striking, striking. The United States actually incarcerates more black people than South Africa did during apartheid. There are more black people in the US prison system than in college in this country. And I just want you guys to think about some of these things before you decide whether you're going to vote for a ban on medical marijuana collectives. Thank you.
Megan Ryan? If you could hold your applause so we get all the speakers. Thank you, Megan.
Good morning. Thank you, Tom. My name's Megan Ryan. It's a pleasure to be here again. Thank you all for being here and hearing us out. I am here to voice my opposition to any ban in the city of Los Angeles, any ban on medical marijuana collectives, any ban against dispensaries. Any ban is going to have a negative impact on the community. I know many of you are aware of the benefits of cannabis, have experienced it yourselves. I know I don't need to fight for that argument. You already understand the benefits of cannabis, but you are up here fighting for public safety in the name of banning medical cannabis and taking cannabis away from cancer patients, from terminally ill people. You want to ban cannabis from these people. Should we talk about public safety? Should we talk about the number of bars in Los Angeles? 574 bars, 129 nightclubs, 841 liquor stores? That doesn't even count the number of grocery stores, 7-Elevens, other markets that sell liquor. People are dying every day from car accidents from using alcohol. They're dying every day from alcohol abuse, and you guys are up here talking about public safety. Whose safety are you really concerned with? Really? You're concerned with your own safety, with your own political safety, with your political careers, with the money that is going to be put in your pockets, you're bought and sold. Your votes are bought and sold. And you want to take this from the people. This is a billion-dollar industry. Tax it, regulate it. Use the money for healthcare, for education, for what it needs to be used for. Thank you.
Van Nuys City Hall, Miriam Folger, Donna Pearlman. Donna and Miriam.
Call her Pearlman, see?
Let's go.
You see, the travesty is that you can't even pronounce her names right after you... You know it very well that you're doing this on purpose.
No, I'm not.
There is new technology now, folks, to keep this going, and there's no excuse to turn this off. We can use Facebook, or we can Skype. There's many ways. This has not been explored as other options to keep the video conferencing in Van Nuys up, and I object to ways city councils have been running their meetings, making us sit there for two and a half hours, three hours here, and I'm so tired. I'm in pain from my back now, and my tuchus here hurts from sitting here. Can you imagine? I'm going to sit down there in your hard benches that long after riding a bus for through three hours? How dare you tell us that we have to do that? And then accommodate us for just sending in our comments to the folders, and that's it, not be heard. That's what you call accommodations? That's really bad. Really. That's a First Amendment violation because the people have a right to be heard, no matter who they are, whether they're disabled or not. Your obligation is to put people in here to be heard and to have a voice in their government, not you. You're not the ones that's supposed to be us serving you. You're supposed to serve us. You're supposed to serve us. How dare you shut this off? I'm going to fight you all the way to the Supreme Court if need be to get this, my, our rights here in the valley, the San Fernando Valley. We have a right to have this. This is our government. It's not yours. It's not yours inside the budget. It's ours, not yours. So, please, folks, call them and tell them, bring their phones off the hook. Write your letters till the boxes come in, like Mr. Smith Goes to Washington.
Donna Pearlman. Donna Pearman. Donna Pearman, I got you right, Donna.
Okay. Yeah. One thing, I always thought that this, that city government was good because you couldn't really fight federal government.
Mr. Smith Goes to Washington.
Yeah. Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, just like that. We couldn't fight federal government. You can't really fight state government. But there was the last thing we could have a say on, where we did have a say on this city government, the city hall. Even though I know that nothing I would say would ever change the mind of the city council members. That's why people don't come down here. But what they can do is...
It's 11:52, folks. 10 o'clock meeting, something said. Everybody's here, they're not going to sit here three hours.
Yeah. Anyway, what we, I thought what we could speak on, and now they took that away, is to speak in front of the city council and be able to let the public know how we feel. And this is not going to be able to do that when you shut down the video conferencing for Van Nuys. And this is not just a spot for me and Miriam. This is a spot for potential for a lot of people to come down to the valley, but most people don't even realize that this is here. And then if we got, which is about after 12 o'clock, and we came down here at 10 o'clock, and that's why a lot of people don't want to come down here and either speak in front of here or speak in front of downtown. They don't, most people don't even know about it.
They make it here for hours.
Yeah, so you really have got to think about it. What rights you're taking away, and you know, you're overspending everywhere where you have it. You, since today, you did it over there in Hollywood.
Put it back in the budget now!
Please, think about how important it is, and not just the money.
Put it back in the budget, pair of blessed hands. Let us have that choice to have public hearings to save money for the city. Have the hearings on it, and we can save money with the video conferencing through Skyping.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker, I think that was a duet, Adrian Gross.
Good afternoon, members of the council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. First, I would like to bring your attention to a medication called Marinol, with which you may not be familiar. It was approved by the FDA. It is a synthetic form of THC, or tetrahydrocannabinol, which is one of the active ingredients in marijuana. It's called dronabinol. So it is a synthetic version of THC that was approved through all the stringent standards and trials. As you know, double-blind trials, efficacy improvements. They have to prove that it works beyond statistical significance. You're probably aware of all the things it takes to be approved by the FDA. And dronabinol, which is a synthetic version of THC, was approved by these means. Further, users of dronabinol report increased and sometimes too much of a psychoactive effect. So in fact, it has higher side effects and lower efficacy, and yet this was approved by the FDA. And also, this drug is available through a dispensary, which we call a pharmacy, which also carries other drugs which are more addictive, Vicodin, Tylenol-3, the list goes on. And yet, these pharmacies, which equate to dispensaries, are regarded as a boon to local economies and are welcomed into neighborhoods rather than what's going on now with the dispensaries. So I'd like to leave you to consider that if you're not aware of dronabinol and Marinol. And second, I'm sure you've seen a lot of people speak before you, and I'm sure you probably have an idea of who and what kind of person a medical marijuana user is. And I'd like to address and dispel that stereotype right now. I graduated with honors as a national, as a member of the National Honor Society and a National Hispanic Scholar from high school, a private high school in Florida. I graduated with honors from the University of South Florida. I just finished a tenure as the seven-year general manager of the most successful business of its kind in Los Angeles County, and I'm currently pursuing advanced studies. And I am a member of Mensa, and I'm a proud medical marijuana user.
Thank you very much. Before you go, I'd like to move item trial forthwith. I believe Councilor Cardenas likes to move item trial forthwith. Okay. Our next speaker is Natalie M. Hudson. Come on up. After Natalie, we have Tara Yeno. After Tara, we have Methra Duroxian. So please come on up. Good day, ma'am.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Hudson, and I am a Legal Studies pre-law honors graduate of the University of Massachusetts Amherst. I'm a resident of the Southgate community. However, I am a volunteer and caregiver at a collective in Los Angeles that provides safe access to quality medicine for hundreds of terminally ill patients. It would be irresponsible for the city to approve any type of ban in the city of Los Angeles. Any ban would without a doubt limit the safe access to the estimated 350,000 medical marijuana patients that reside in the city of Los Angeles. The idea that collectives bring additional crime into the neighborhoods is completely false and unsubstantiated. According to statistics compiled from the Huffington Post, there are more shootings that occur near high schools than collectives. According to the LAPD Crime App, crimes such as vandalism, thefts, and robberies occur with regular frequency in neighborhoods where there is no collective within a two-mile radius. As a California resident and law-abiding American citizen, I urge the council to please not allow any law or ban which would restrict access of alternative medicine to sick legally-qualified patients. Simple, effective regulations such as those that exist in the cities of West Hollywood, which is really close, San Francisco, and West Palm are what we need, not a ban. Thank you.
Next speaker, come on up. If I called your name, please come to the microphone.
Hi. How are you all today? My name is Tara Yeno, and I am a resident, a student, and a volunteer in the greater Los Angeles area. I am here to oppose the ban on collectives. I ask you to look at all the cities that are already using medical marijuana and have medical marijuana ordinances that work. I agree that public safety is of high importance of our community and of our county, but I also believe that we can agree that public health and safe access for that public health is also of equal importance. Banning collectives simply on the idea that collectives attract crime, I don't believe is a cogent argument. Many other establishments such as liquor stores, banks, and even campuses all around the county have crime that occurs, yet they are not considered crime attractors. Please, I ask you to not ban the, or, I ask you to not ban collectives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you start, I'd like to call to Sidney Krasewick and Michael Caddion, if you're still here, as well as, I believe it's Dr. Perry Crouch. Good day, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Mitra Gackson. I'm 23 years old. I'm an environmental science student. I'm a registered voter, and I'm a native to Los Angeles. I came here to speak to you about your pending decision on whether or not to ban medical marijuana collectives in Los Angeles as a public safety issue. I would like to point out that according to an approved statement by the US Department of Justice, nearly all medicines have toxic, potentially lethal effects, but cannabis is not such a substance. There is no record in the extensive medical literature describing a proven, documented cannabis-induced fatality. In practical terms, cannabis cannot induce a lethal response as a result of drug-related toxicity. From January 1997, which is one year after Prop 215 was enacted, the US Food and Drug Administration reported zero deaths caused by the primary use of cannabis. In contrast, common FDA-approved drugs, which are often prescribed in lieu of cannabis, were the primary cause of 10,008 deaths. Each year, 50,000 people die from alcohol poisoning. Similarly, more than 400,000 deaths each year are attributed to tobacco smoking. If this is the case, then why are liquor stores and the sale of tobacco so widespread throughout Los Angeles? Wouldn't it make more sense to ban these storefronts, which are openly profiting from the sale of toxic and lethal substances? Please listen to your constituency. Do the research. Find ways, as other California cities have, to tax and regulate medical marijuana. Keep our cities safe by not banning medical marijuana collectives. Thank you so much for your time.
So we did call, please come on up. I had called several names.
Sidney?
Dr. Perry Crouch?
No, I'm Sidney.
Come on up, Sidney. Go ahead.
Hi. Good morning. I'm here to urge you to remember what you're here for, to represent the people. We elected you to represent our opinions, regardless of how big the conflict is, between your personal opinion and your constituents' opinion. Our opinion is to have no ban on any part of Prop 215 and Senate Bill 420. More than half of California voted in 1996 to pass these laws. As it's written, and as such, you're supposed to respect and represent our vote to the fullest. To not do so would be a mockery of the system. Please, I urge you to respect the medical marijuana laws we passed 16 years ago and oppose any ban on medical marijuana collectives. Passing any ban on medical marijuana collectives hurts the community and puts the public in danger by expanding the black market, by forcing all patients, especially the elderly and the terminally ill patients, to get their most effective medicine from drug dealers who don't care to control the quality of their medicines, who use violence and our public streets as means to conduct their gang organization. Medical marijuana collectives care about increasing public safety through offering safe, high-quality medicines at affordable rates from facilities close to patients' homes, as many of them find trouble traveling far due to their illnesses. Passing a ban would block many positive changes for LA and its sick residents while encouraging and creating gang and drug trafficking organizations and activities. There are too many negative aspects to enforcing a ban. Respect the people's choice to have collectives, and please open your minds and recognize the benefits of having collectives around. Please represent your constituents and oppose the ban on collectives. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to call the next group of speakers. Dr. Perry Crouch, are you still here? Okay. Kenyara Simun. Yvonne Michelle. Okay. Jordan. It's H-G-R-A-B-L-Y. Are you here, Jordan? William Rusbason. Come on up. And Asif Aseyed. Are you here? A-S-I-F, last name is S-Y-E-D. Okay, then. Sir, come on up. Go ahead.
I'm William Rusbason, and I'm a patient, I'm an AIDS patient, and I use marijuana because I don't like the effects that the medicine has on me. And not that I just don't like them, because it doesn't feel good. It feels like crap. And, you know, I remember about 15 or 20 years ago, I was going down to Aunt Whittier, or down to Westminster, and I was patting the head of my cousin who had AIDS, and he was in his bed, little bed. I remember praying with this guy, you know, and crying with the guy. He was prescribed Marinol. Doctors prescribed him Marinol, and his mother, who was pretty old, and she was my aunt, and she died since then, but she said to me, she said, "Bill, the insurance won't pay for the Marinol anymore, and I'm thinking about asking you to bring some marijuana from the city." I don't, well, I guess she knew when I was a kid, I was a pretty, you know, wild guy. And, you know, it has nothing to do with being wild today. It has to do with surviving and showing up, you know? I get the enthusiasm to show up and maybe defend my cousin or defend our, our community, you know, patients and caregivers, you know? We work hand in hand, and, man, they helped me a whole lot, the caregivers that are right in front of us, right here, and other places. And I've been to places before where I got medicine, and this one guy, a CEO or something, he said, "I'm in, I'm here to make money. I'm in business to make money." And I haven't been back, you know? We need the regulation. Maybe we need regulation. I really don't know what the solution is, but for anybody else, or for the city. I love Los Angeles. I love this city, and I've been here for 40 years, and my cousin did too. And Raphael, John, a lot of my friends that have died already, they could have used some better medicine than what they had, and I think they would have passed a little bit more smoother. And, you know, rest in peace, Richard Kearns and...
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
... and all the people of...
Thank you, sir. Just come on up, give us your name.
My name...
Please, yes.
My name is Asif Said.
Yes, sir.
And I used to live in Los Angeles City before, and now I live in Pico Rivera. This is regarding Department of Transportation and the Parking Control Department. I was giving a ticket on a running car. They give a parking ticket, and I cannot get rid of that anyway. I cannot prove it anyway. The law is like this. It's only one way. Nobody want to hear it, and nobody want to consider it. So...
Sir, did you get the ticket in Pico Rivera or in Los Angeles?
No, in Los Angeles City.
Okay. We'll have someone speak to you right after.
So I don't know, anybody can happen this thing, but nobody, there is no way to prove it. The law is like this. So I would request you to change the law. This parking ticket, if it is given in a moving car, I was stopping a red light, and I was giving the ticket. And I would request you, if you please can do it, that parking ticket only, the license plate number from the back should not be enough. It should be the VIN number. Without a VIN number, a parking ticket should not be given. And the officer who did it is not responsible for anything, this wrong thing. And another thing is, VIN number, you don't...
Thank you, sir. I'll have someone speak to you so we get those details. Okay? Thank you very much, sir. So seeing no other public comment cards, we can move to the next item. Madam, what's in front of us? Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for post and a referral.
Okay. Do we have motions, post and refer?
The desk is clear.
Okay. Members, any announcements? Attorney motions? An announcement?
Yeah, members, tomorrow's summer solstice, the longest day of the year. For all the public, we'll be having a hike at Griffith Park to Mount Hollywood. You're welcome to come to the observatory anytime after 6:00 and hike up to Mount Hollywood and enjoy the longest day of the year from Mount Hollywood, 1,625 feet above sea level.
No other announcements? Still, attorney motions? Everybody please rise, please stand. Councilor Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I stand with great sadness to announce that Donald "Big D" Garcia passed away on Saturday, June 9, 2012. He passed away after battling, having a battle with cancer. He was born and raised in San Fernando. Donald Garcia's father was killed by a Pocoima gang members at a San Fernando park on March 7, 1943, when Donald was only two years old. As such, his widowed mother began working at a tothia factory to support her five children after his father was slain, and in the early 1950s, she had lost her job at the factory. Donald attended San Fernando High School where, as a young boy, Donald recalled, "I wanted to become a cop and arrest people who did bad things like what they did to my dad." Instead, Donald got involved in a life of crime and spent half of his life, 31 years, in prison and jails and juvenile halls. He was also known on the streets as Big D. Donald Garcia became an internationally renowned gang intervention outreach worker for communities and schools of the San Fernando Valley, calling on his vast reservoir of hard times to mentor and convince other men and young adults not to follow the path that he once was on. Donald Garcia detailed his life experiences in his often-read book, Big D: Victorious Through God's Grace, in which he talked about how he overcame a life of crime through his family and prayer. Big D shared his story to countless people within the outside of the criminal justice system and aimed to help others get away from the gang lifestyle and stay on the right track. Donald will always be with us in spirit and never forgotten. He's survived by his spouse, Linda, who he was married to for 35 years. Also, Donald is also survived by his two daughters, Tina and Stella, and his son Mario. His grandchildren, Donald, Pamela, Salina, Aaron Jr., Jerry, Adam, Adriana, and Amber; and great-grandsons, Gio Jr. and Donovan; his siblings, Johnny, Eleanor, Linda, and Molly; along with numerous nephews, nieces, cousins, aunts, uncles, extended family, and friends like me. I'd just like to... I'd just like to add a personal note to that. I met Big D when he was doing intervention work with a lot of young people, and I can tell you that he had a tremendous effect in turning young people around, because after spending 31 years of his life in juvenile hall and prison, he was able to look into the eyes of these young people and let them know that that is not the life they want to lead, and it doesn't lead to anything good. And he actually turned many, many lives around. The latter half of Donald's life was dedicated to making sure that he saved as many young lives as he could, and Donald Garcia was a personal friend of mine, and he's going to be missed greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, Councilmember?
Actually, I wanted to join in with Councilmember Cardenas. I also had an adjourning motion ready for Donald "Big D" Garcia. You know, a lot of people give a lot of credit to the peace treaty in the northeast San Fernando Valley and the San Fernando Valley, but little old fact is that there were a few people that were the anchors to that peace treaty, and Donald Garcia was one of those people. In fact, when I took office in 1993 and asked LAPD to work with communities and schools, with Blinkie Rodriguez, with Bobby Arias, and with Donald Garcia, it was them who began the process of developing what became a very solid peace treaty in the early 90s or mid-90s, I should say. And in doing so, they saved lives. There's no question that Donald was at the core of it, because he represented the targets. He represented those who, historically at least in his life experience, represented those people who found themselves in the same challenges of gang membership and violence and criminal activity. So there was no better spokesperson to counteract that activity than somebody who had been there and yet who had seen the new light. He was a man of faith. Having said that, he believed fiercely in God and Jesus Christ, and he spoke of that very casually to whoever he was addressing. Now, I never met Donald before, 20 years ago. I didn't know him when he was involved in criminal activity. I didn't know him when he was incarcerated. But I did know him after, and for the last 20 years, I can tell you that he is a man who did a lot of good and saved a lot of lives. I also remember him traveling to Sacramento. As a state senator, we would address classes of kids every once in a while, and there was this one class that came, and I was speaking to it, and I noticed this inconspicuous person standing in the back with a baseball hat on, and it was Donald Garcia. And I said, "Donald, what are you doing here?" And he said, "Well, I'm just traveling with my grandson's class." And it was really interesting, because he did not mention anything about the work he was doing in the community. He was not there to lobby anybody. He was just there to be a grandfather. So with all the kudos that Tony and I place on this gentleman's shoulders, I think the greatest joy that he took in life was that he was a good grandfather. And it took a long route, but he accomplished it. And finally, let me just say that I saw him give a speech at Phoenix House to a group of young people who are graduating from that program. And after it, he came up to me and he said, "You know, the irony of all ironies is my grandson is now with the Los Angeles Police Department." And he was so proud of that. And he said, "Nobody would have ever guessed that anybody connected to me would ever become a police officer." But he was very, very proud of his grandson. So I hope that we all take away from Donald's life the notion that recovery and rehabilitation is achievable. And sometimes it's dramatic. Most often, it's not as dramatic as in Donald's case, but every once in a while, there will be a Donald Garcia that will turn their life completely around, give their life to their religious beliefs, and in doing so, create a lot of good in our community. I will remember Donald for the good that he did, and I hope that all will recognize him for that.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for celebrating the unsung heroes. Any other adjournments? Thank you. Have a great day. The end of this council.